Learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
So what day is it? The December 20th. This is the meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I'm Kevin Bum, zoning board chair. To my left is the vice chair, Bob Pryor, alternate Martha Pennell, to my right Laura Davies and Joanne Petito. First, I'd like to make an announcement for anyone who's here on the 29 Garfield Street application. You probably saw the notice on the front door, but that has been postponed until the February 21st meeting, so we won't be hearing that tonight or considering it. What I'd like to do, because we have a long meeting, why don't we go ahead and I was thinking we go ahead and we could make a motion on that continuance?
Yeah, you need to recuse yourself.
I am recused from that application.
So as vice chair, I will ask for a motion to postpone the application of 29 Garfield Street LLC until the February meeting.
I move to postpone that application to the February meeting.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, so we will hear the application of 29 Garfield Street in February.
Thank you. So, nice work. Warm everyone up. First application tonight is the application of Riverwoods Company of Exeter for variance from Article 2, Section 2.2.26, which is the definition of elderly congregant health care to prevent skilled nursing care off-site on a related campus. This is for property at 7 Riverwoods Drive in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. I think before we get started, I know we have two members that are recusing themselves from this application as well, so Bob, Martha, if you want to step down and then you can come back for the third application. And for the applicant, I know you have two separate applications tonight. I leave it to you if you want to present those separately or do an initial presentation together at your discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Sharon Summers. I'm an attorney with Donahue Tucker &amp; Shindela, and I'm here tonight representing the interests of Riverwoods. With me are various representatives of Riverwoods, starting at the far-left Justine Vogel, who is the CEO, Kim Gaskell, who is the interim executive director of Riverwoods Exeter, Cindy Martin, who has been a longtime head of nursing, for lack of a better word, she has a different title, but she is unfortunately ill and could not make it tonight, so we do probably have a few comments that she's going to share. And then finally, well, actually not finally, but we also have Dave Brownell, who is the chair of the Board of Trustees of Riverwoods, and then with us is Eric Sari from Altus Engineers in the event that any kind of engineering questions should arise. So, on the screen there is shown sort of a blown-up version of the general area that we're talking about. Oh, thank you. Actually, I'm giving this to the man who knows how to use this. And what we are seeking tonight is essentially to take the three existing campuses of Riverwoods, the health centers at each of those campuses, and to create one centralized health center. In order to do that, we initially, or we have filed three, we initially filed three separate variances. One was a variance to allow a health center off-site of the Woods campus, which was the original campus created in 1991. And then the second variance request is to allow a health center, which is currently at the Boulders, be moved on to a centralized location, both of which will be located at the Ridge. So the essence of this is that we are going to have one health center to be located at a point on the Ridge campus and which will service all three campuses. Originally, I would note as well that the thinking was that we would also need to have a density variance for a possible use of independent living units at the Woods where the health center will be removed. It was determined via an administrative decision rendered by Doug Eastman that that density variance was not required, and there is a letter in your packet dated October 12th to that effect. That letter has not, or that decision has not been appealed. As a result of that, we are thus here tonight only for two variances, and the topic on both of those variances is to seek approval from this board to allow us to have one central health center to serve all three campuses. I will later on in the presentation walk you through, for the record, why we meet the various variance criteria, but I think probably the first item of business which is most important is to hear from Justine Vogel, who is going to describe for you really the rationale behind the thinking of this process. And among other things, she's going to talk about the evolution of how the health care at Riverwoods is provided generally and how the staffing challenges that are currently being experienced in the health center have been accelerated by the pandemic. We'll talk about the thinking that the central location for medical services will concentrate the providing of services on one location with one team, thus resulting in the need for less staff overall for all three campuses. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Justine at this point in time, and then I will come back for some further commentary.
Good evening. So, just to set the basics, our Riverwoods Exeter community is one legal entity, but we're located in three parcels, or we call them three campuses. And in each of our three campuses, we have a wellness center where we employ a nurse practitioner and a nurse, and then that team provides sort of a light primary care for our independent living residents. We believe having access to a medical practitioner who knows you helps keep people healthier and healthier longer. Those wellness centers will remain in each campus. At each campus, we also currently have distinct health centers, and those health centers provide long-term care, both assisted living and nursing home care. Since November 2021, we've been sharing with our residents the reality that we need to centralize the onsite health care services of assisted living and nursing care, not the wellness clinics. This is for three reasons. It's actually for many reasons, but three primary ones. And though centralizing comes with some challenges and inconveniences, we believe it serves the highest good for the Riverwoods community and its residents. The first reason is that by centralizing our health care buildings, we can add specifically designed memory care units to the mix and better cater to folks with cognitive needs, Alzheimer's and other dementias. For example, people with Alzheimer's generally thrive in a smaller and home-like environment. We have this in our Riverwoods Durham community. Folks with Alzheimer's generally like to wander, so we want to have a place for them to wander safely, to eat in small groups, and have access to safe outdoor space. We do provide memory care now, but a centralized building allows our space to match our programming. The need for memory care is increasing as our nation ages, and this allows us to provide a safe and programmatically specific environment. The second reason is a big one, and that's there is a nationwide shortage of health care workers. You can't turn on the TV or read the news without seeing that. We're not immune to it. Quality of care is dependent upon staffing. We're fortunate to have an amazing team of health care leaders and a team of nurses and nursing assistants who provide an excellent level of care, but the reality is that it's getting harder and harder to do that and more and more dependent on what we call agency nursing. Agency nurses are temporary workers. They may be in our building today and in some other community tomorrow. Using agency nursing or ongoing overtime from our current staff is hard on our team and even harder on our residents in health care because they don't get a consistent face for caregivers. Centralizing into one building allows us to staff the health care units more efficiently, which would reduce our need for staff and increase the consistency in the health care providers. This is good for our staff teams and even better for our residents. Having the same number of health care residents but being able to take care of them in one building instead of three allows us to use fewer people because there will be less duplication. In the old days, that would have been about saving money. In this new world order, it's about being able to provide consistent staffing with consistent faces. That's among the biggest concern for our health care residents and their families. You want your mom to receive her care from someone she knows and trusts. The availability of nursing staffing is not something that will get better in time. Demographics and the outcome of the pandemic have forever changed this profession. Frankly, not addressing this in every way possible is just sticking our head in the The third reason is that what we learned during the worst parts of the pandemic. Our communities were designed to have the health centers be an integrated part of the independent living environment, but here's the reality. That crossover, while it happens sometimes, is rare. So what happens is that folks whose primary home is in our health centers, they miss out on a lot of the amenities of our community because they don't come to the common areas in the independent wings to enjoy them. Some people do, most don't. And that can include going to the hairdresser, or morning coffee in the bistro, or fitness space, or just casual lounging to hang out with family and friends. The amenities that folks with physical or cognitive challenges want may be slightly different than folks who are healthier, and we can and should have an environment that's more aligned to their wants and needs. With good intention, we have always thought about our health care through the eyes of an independent living resident, and while that's important, it isn't the most informed viewpoint. The letters you received from our independent living residents express those concerns. But having a centralized health care building will allow us to focus on the kind of amenities that speak to this specific time of life for our health care residents. And finally, if and when there's another time in our lives where we need to isolate in the health centers, we can and should have an environment that allows people to live as full a life as possible. There's a difference between keeping people alive and helping them really live. No one died of COVID at Riverwoods Exeter, but for sure, some people died because of it and because of the isolation and challenges caused by it. We know more now, and we should do better. And if God help us, there's a next time, we need to do better. That's the reality of modern-day health care, and we need to adjust. Health care and long-term care has evolved over 30 years. We know more now. Alzheimer's residents have a need for consistency in schedule and staffing, and all residents who live primarily in health care deserve a physical building that represents the best that we can provide: light, space, a feeling and connection to the outdoors, amenities that draw people in and feel like home. And honestly, they deserve just having enough space, space for resident families and friends to come and be a part of. One concern that we face when someone needs to move to our health centers now is how small the personal space is. Basically, our long-term care rooms are about the size of a hospital room. This new building will allow those rooms to be large enough to also fit a few comfortable chairs or a small table and chairs. We hear the concerns about a spouse, we hear the concerns about a spouse being able to visit on a moment's notice in an emergency, and that's a real challenge, and it's something we'll address with transportation. But the new building and the personal space in the rooms will maximize visiting in the many moments when a spouse is still well enough to enjoy visiting and have a new kind of normal life together. We're willing to spend the money that we can to provide the best home for folks who are at the most vulnerable stage of their life. Health care delivery has progressed exponentially over the last 30 years, even over the past 10 since the Boulders was built, and we need to progress with it, with amenities that are tailored to the needs of the people who live there and help those folks live a full life. We believe these are compelling reasons that we need to centralize health care, and make no mistake, we view this as a need, not a want. Like all things in life, these benefits come with some trade-offs. Some of our folks have expressed their concern about those trade-offs to you in letters. Approximately 30% of our residents are married, and those married people who have a spouse in health care will give up the opportunity to walk down the hall in slippers to see their spouse if that spouse is permanently or temporarily in a health care apartment. And centralizing health care will require a bit more planning to have crossover between the buildings on a formal or informal basis. And there is the general, hey, this isn't what we thought we were getting concern. And all of those are valid concerns and things we're working to address. We've committed to providing transportation to the new central building 24 hours a day. We do that now on the various occasions where residents receive health care at a campus that is not their own. We'll create a solid plan to make that happen consistently. The personal rooms in the new health care center, either memory support or nursing care or assisted living, will be distinctly larger than the current version, and will be big enough to graciously accept visitors. We don't have that now, and it's a deterrent to family and friend visits. We think this will help people maintain connection. Just by having the opportunity for some chairs or table in your space, you can invite people over and they can comfortably stay. Just from a personal perspective, my father-in-law lives in one of our health centers, and I know from my own family how difficult it is to just be in a tight space. As it relates to the crossover between the buildings, it's something I think we can not only maintain but improve. While the current building connection does in fact make it easy to do now, it still happens infrequently. Our plan is to design the new central health care building with a draw, with a reason to come visit, formally or informally, per staff and residents. And finally, the reality is that you may now have friends in health care at all three campuses. Centralizing health care provides a common opportunity to visit all at once. We recognize there are also myriad technical solutions that can implement in a new building to provide communication and connection. The fact is that we don't see the new central health care building as a reduction in the quality of life for our health care residents. We see it as an improvement. We have a term we use in our community: choose your change. We live in a dynamic environment. We've all experienced that in the last few years. Things are always changing, and in the health care environment, perhaps more than others. So we can fight against change or try to avoid it, but honestly, that just doesn't work, so we choose our change, and we believe this will be a change for the better. The centralized health care building will provide an opportunity for more consistent staffing, more consistent leadership, better, more spacious design for visiting, and common spaces that are a draw for the whole community. We think it will be something that the whole community, Riverwoods, and all of Exeter will be very proud of.
Well, of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions which the board may have, but for right now, I would just like to, I'm not going to obviously read all my written arguments, but I want to, for the record, make some points with regard to why we meet the variance criteria, and also just as a reminder, because I do know that this application at this point is a little old. I submitted it back in August and then another one at the end of September. And the reason that we're here is that back in 1991, we received a special exception in order to allow us to operate an congregate care facility, and one of the threshold criteria in order to be eligible for that special exception was that we have onsite what are called in the ordinance nursing home facilities regulated by the state licensing board. So, in order to have that special exception status remain, we are here seeking a variance for this. That's by way of context. So, with that in mind, and my comments are going to be addressed to both of the applications since they're both all the same issues, as simply as one is on the other side of the street. So, I would like to say first of all that this is not contrary to the public interest. One of the basic principles of continuing care is that care is going to be provided for all stages of life. The basic purpose of the ordinance is to ensure that the nursing component of this continuing care is not divorced from the daily life of the rest of the community and that nursing care residents enjoy as high a quality of life as possible. Our proposal honors the basic purpose because we will have a central location to reflect the changing needs of the health service, as Justine has just addressed, but it will be on one of the campuses and not somewhere outside of the Riverwoods community. The proposal will not alter the essential character of the community and that Riverwoods will continue to be comprised of independent living, assisted living, and nursing care, and there will be no alteration of the existing character of the nearby community of single-family houses. The proposal will not be a threat to public health, safety, or welfare, and that the same level of high-quality health care will continue to be provided to Riverwoods residents. We certainly understand that when we get farther along in our efforts and come up with a design, that we will inevitably need to come back to possibly this board and certainly the planning board for detailed discussions about internal traffic circulation. And also, as submitted as part of the August submittal, we did have Steve Purnow of Anas Hagan take a look at any possible traffic implications with regard to the move from the Woods over to this site, and his conclusions indicate that there is no negative impact.
Chair, if I could, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
Because you're going through both at the same time, that was for the Woods only, correct?
That is correct.
The Boulders?
That's correct, and we've not done that. Our focus was on the Woods, frankly, because that was, there was going to be a change in that instance as it impacted a public road, meaning 111. So we did not do anything at this point in time with regard to the Boulders move to a central location because, first of all, we haven't done a design at this point, and secondly, that's the type of issue in terms of internal circulation, which will be examined with great scrutiny, I'm sure, when we come to the planning board. So the second criteria is the spirit and intent, and as the board well knows, this is the, under New Hampshire law, this is regarded in the same fashion as the public With regard to whether or not the values of the surrounding properties are going to diminish, be diminished, the answer is diminish, be diminished, the answer is no. There is a pre-existing package of uses on all three campuses, namely independent living, assisted living, and nursing care. And there is no change to the overall mix of these categories of uses. Whatever property tax impacts there may be from Riverwoods have been there since 19, starting in 1991 and progressing all the way through the future, as these other two campuses have come online. Also, even assuming that more independent living units may be added to the woods or even to the Boulders, the nature of that use of the independent living does not change and remains an allowed use. And any increase, or any impact from the increase in terms of the independent living would be something that would be measured as part of the site review examination. But again, the independent living is an allowed use. The fourth criteria, which is substantial justice, we believe that there's a benefit to Riverwoods, the applicant, by having centralized healthcare in that it acknowledges the existing environment of providing healthcare and does so with the reality of comparing how that was done when Riverwoods first started in 1994. In turn, the centralized healthcare will help to ensure that those residents receiving healthcare will have a high quality of life and a sense of community, both with the independent living residents and with the family and friends, which Justine has just spoken about and who are going to be visiting. There is no public harm whatsoever by having a centralized health center to serve all three campuses. And there is no harm to private parties, including the residents of Riverwoods themselves. As outlined by Justine, Riverwoods believes that the healthcare residents, or that the independent living residents and all residents of Riverwoods will be benefited by this proposal. And the healthcare residents will enjoy an equivalent or better level of services and environment. And that also applies with equal force to the independent living residents themselves, who may themselves one day be residents in the health center. No harm is going to come to the independent living residents. And while some inconvenience may occur, as has been expressed in some of the letters from the residents, I think we have pointed out already that we're taking this, any perceived inconvenience well into account by providing transportation so that somebody at the woods can go and visit somebody in the central healthcare and so forth. And, yes, so the next criteria is that of hardship. The property has special conditions. This property is unique. It is owned and operated as a single entity with a single Medicare number, but it consists of, happens to consist of three separate lots. These lots contain a congregate care community begun in 1994 and which has grown and evolved over the years to now include three separate campuses. It is situated adjacent to a variety of single-family homes. And what we are seeking, as I've said before, is to have one health center rather than three. And to have that located, not across town, but on one of the campuses. I've referenced in my materials, the Harborside case, which we, I suggest you that you, as a board, can consider. That case stands for the proposition that, as a board, you can consider unique aspects of a property that otherwise not matter in order to find hardship. I contend that this particular property is one of those cases and that you should consider a 30-year-old operation, which happens to consist of three lots, but which is owned and operated as one, as unique aspects of the property, and that that in turn will enable you to find hardship here. The second prong of the hardship, of course, is that there is no fair and substantial relationship between the intent of the ordinance and the application to this proposal. The ordinance is silent as to the intent, as to why the nursing home facility has to be physically onsite. The property was first created, and I believe the ordinance was created at that same time, in the early 1990s. And that was at a time of a completely different era of healthcare. And frankly, most likely without having in mind a situation like we find ourselves in right now, where there is multiple lots, all in close proximity to each other, but where the property, where the entity is owned and operated by one party. And all the debt is for the full company, not, it's not distinct for any actual building lot. So I think the important thing here is that the intent is not readily evident from the ordinance itself and frankly, doesn't account for this kind of situation. We believe as well that arguably, the ordinance may not even apply and that it is under discussion here tonight because the literal language of the ordinance calls for you to consider it. And to consider whether or not onsite care is met in order to qualify for us for the special exception. I would suggest that the ordinance was most likely designed to present, to prevent residents who are receiving healthcare services from somehow being shipped offsite across town, sight unseen, from the rest of the congregate care community. And that makes a lot of sense. I mean, when you're going to be structuring an ordinance like this and structuring this kind of residential environment, you want to ensure that all, all aspects of the spectrum of residency are going to be essentially in one place. And so I think that's probably what was intended. Here, the proposed health center will still be at Riverwoods. It's not going to be across town. And therefore, we believe that it is, for all practical purposes, still going to be onsite. It's just going to be a centralized facility. And therefore, this does, there's a rational explanation as to why this would happen. Finally, we believe that this is a fair and reasonable proposal. We're still going to be providing healthcare service at the Riverwoods community for all of the residents. It's just going to be in one location. It is fair to all residents of Riverwoods to provide state-of-the-art healthcare and to provide transportation and other measures so that independent living residents can still be part of the life of the healthcare center patients. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions which the board may have for me, but probably those questions may be more likely directed at Justine.
Either of you have any initial question?
I was wondering, actually, I vaguely recall that Riverwoods was regulated by the Insurance Commission because of the structure of the financial arrangements. Is that, am I on the right track there? Has the Insurance Commission taken a look at this change in the plan?
And if I could ask, whoever answers the question, just be at the microphone, please, or you won't be picked up on the video.
So yes, we are regulated by, our health centers are regulated by Department of Health and Human Services. Our contract is regulated by the Insurance Commissioner. So we do not believe that this is something that requires insurance department oversight because it is appropriate and still legal within our contract with our residents.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, so are you able to self-determine that? Or does that get passed by anybody, any regulatory agents?
Through our attorney. We've had that discussion.
Okay.
That's on the, that relates to the contract. I guess my, similarly, Health and Human Services regulates, does this require any waiver there in terms of the services provided?
Not a waiver from Health and Human Services, but when we build a centralized healthcare center, it would be licensed by Health and Human Services. That will require survey, it will require licensure, again, for that building.
Do you have more? I have some question.
Go ahead. I'm still thinking.
I guess my biggest question, it seems to me the boil-down, you're asking us to treat the three campuses as a single site.
Right.
And so what I'd like to hear more is how that, how that interaction is going to work. You know, you suggested that, that they are, you know, it is one community and they are intertwined.
Correct.
And I'm a little troubled that it seems that some of this, and I understand this is early in the process, even though it's been before us for some time and it's taken a while to get here. But I'm a little concerned to hear that, that all the, you know, transportation plans, those things seem to be more prospective. And I'd like to have a better sense of how, how it is going, if we are going to treat this basically as a single site, you know, how the three campuses will, you know, will interact so that the intent of the ordinance of providing onsite services is met.
Sure. So, I mean, we operate as a single site now. It's, each campus has its own flavor. People choose the location they're going to live in based on apartment size, maybe pricing, but we are one community now. So residents dine at other campuses, they may, they can drive campus to campus. We have a campus service department. We have buses and transportation that drive around, loops around the building. You know, 12 hours a day, there's absolutely no issue with that. The change for the future will be really what happens at 3:00 AM if, you know, you are healthy, living in your independent apartment, and your spouse is in assisted living or nursing care, and there's a, you know, immediate change in their health status. What we do now, we have either, and sometimes residents will drive their friends after, after hours, sometimes residents drive themselves, most of our residents still drive. But if that occurrence happens, we have 24-hour-a-day staffing. So we will handle that. In the worst case, we'd handle it with our security team to drive people there with our cars. But what we will do over the course of the next six to 12 months is work with a team of residents to develop, you know, a plan that the residents have a say in. And how does that happen? What is it we want? What makes people the most comfortable? But we'll always have a backup plan from our staff.
And could you explain, I, I am not familiar with, you know, the services provided. So it sounds like 12 hours a day. Could you give a little bit of detail about existing transportation?
We're a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year operation, right? So we have, but the reason I say 12 hours a day, it's not even an issue, because 12 hours a day, most of our staff is on, whether that's, you know, a 7:00 to 3:00 shift or through dinner type time shift. So we have tons of staff on, say, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then we have 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, you have healthcare staff on and security staff. So we always have people in the building to be able to do this. What we will do in the future, most likely, is add a nighttime transportation or general additional shift for, either it's, you know, light maintenance that can always pick up the driving.
Is there ongoing transportation or are people expected to generally drive themselves?
There's ongoing transportation now. I mean, we have, I mean, we have a fleet of vehicles in Exeter. We have buses and cars that rotate through the campuses.
Well, and I'm aware of the buses from off-campus. I guess I'm trying to get a sense, you know, if, if, if three campuses, three separate lots of record, this one is certainly, you know, is distinct because it is physically separated from the other lots. And I'm just trying to get a sense of how, how, how they're currently interconnected and interconnected, you know, for, for all the residents and not just people driving. And maybe it is just people that are driving themselves. Maybe it's a mix, but that's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
Most people do drive themselves because, you know, if you drive, it's, you don't want to wait for the bus or the shuttle. But we have shuttle service all day long. We have that opportunity. And we have, in this instance, you know, as we think about how life will change in the future with a centralized healthcare building, we have to provide additional hours of transportation service. Most likely, it will be a role that is more of a jack-of-all-trades type, or jill-of-all-trades type job. But we'll provide, whatever that need is, we'll provide that so that a person is available to drive, you know, at any point in time of the day.
So is, are the buses now in the, in whatever ride services you provide, are they scheduled in advance? Are they sort of on-call? Is there?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to ask Kim to answer that for you because I, it depends.
Yes, so sometimes it is both right now. And I can give you a couple of examples of how this works right now. We had our annual holiday party last week for residents and staff and our trustees. Given the size of the community and the logistics of planning a large-scale holiday party, you don't do that at every campus. We held that at our Woods campus across the street. So residents from the Ridge and Boulders were shuttled there if they so chose. They could also drive on their own. And that's something that happens every single day. Tomorrow, we have a resident finance committee meeting that's held at our Ridge campus. Residents that live at the Woods or the Boulders are able to take a shuttle to the Ridge if they don't want to walk or drive. So we're not eliminating any service. That would remain completely as-is, that residents are able to schedule those rides in advance if they knew they wanted to go over at 3:00 PM, if they wanted to go at 7:00 PM. But then it's also as an as-needed and on-call. If something happened and they needed to get right over there, they could contact the front desk, as they do now, get in touch with campus services, and we could get them to that location. That's really no different. And I know Kevin, Kevin, you asked about services and amenities that we provide. In terms of our independent living residents and our healthcare residents, we have an active and full and vibrant calendar of events that happen seven days a week. And residents from both healthcare and independent living are able to go to any of these events or activities at any campus. So when we look at this from a centralized healthcare perspective, it's almost like our fourth campus now. And so for 30 years, you know, we have evolved and grown when it was just the woods. Then we had the Ridge and we would shuttle in between. And we expanded the offerings because we had to. And that grew with the Boulders. And this will continue with healthcare as well.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I have another question along those lines. On a day-to-day basis, how much shuttling or going back and forth do residents actually do? I mean, I'm having trouble getting a sense of how intertwined, excuse me, these campuses are from the perspective of the residents, because I would imagine that each of these campuses has their own community as well.
It absolutely does. And that's a great question. So each campus does have its own sort of culture, community, activities. Most of those are open to the entire Riverwoods-Exeter community. So when we talk about it that we are one Riverwoods community, we view it as Riverwoods-Exeter, even though you may be separated by Woods, Ridge, and Boulders campuses. But those shuttles are running continuously throughout the day. So let's say that there's a dining committee meeting that's happening at one campus. If members from the other campuses wanted to attend that or there was a presentation, we're just having continuous loops and shuttle services available. So what our community life teams do at each campus, and those teams work collaboratively together so that it's not so separate, and it's one, is that they plan out calendars. Those are posted on a resident portal where residents can see what's happening at every single campus. They then can indicate if they need a ride to that so that we can plan, is it just a car? Is it a bus and a shuttle that needs to pick up? And that's happening every single day throughout the day. Our transportation services also offer transportation to local churches. We offer rides to medical appointments offsite, so that's not going to change. We often have residents in our healthcare settings that do need to go offsite to medical appointments. We often provide that transportation as well as an escort. So again, in that, in that justification of wanting to move towards centralized healthcare, that's another reason too, is that we offer that. It can be picked up in one location, fewer escorts that would be needed from our healthcare staff as well if they're leaving offsite and need that service.
I think just, if the genesis of your question is, you know, how, how... I think just, if the genesis of your question is, you know, how, how much does it feel like one community now?
Yes.
It is one community. It's, I think the residents are distinct about, I live at the Woods, Ridge, or Boulders, but everything is open to everyone. The only time we've ever shut things down campus to campus was during the height of COVID in an attempt to sort of maintain, or at least reduce risk, you know, so. But people can eat at other campuses, they can go to community events at other campuses. We may hold, our Boulders campus and our Woods campus have the largest meeting rooms. So when we do educational events, people come from all sites. So it feels very much, it is one community, just three distinct buildings.
Can I make a point on that? I just want to, this was touched upon by Justine and Sharon in terms of when we thought about COVID and when everything shut down, and your questions about our amenities and services, I just want to highlight that a little bit more. The current design in our independent living campuses is that most of those amenities and services, like a salon to get your hair or nails done, our fitness centers, our pools, those are all currently designed in the independent living portion of each campus. So when we did have to close everything down for COVID, we are much more regulated in the healthcare setting. And so we were not allowed to have any crossover between the two portions of the community. So any residents living in healthcare, there wasn't a separate salon for them to go to. There wasn't a separate fitness center. There wasn't a pool. All of those designed features that residents do come here for and have when they're independent were essentially shut down to them. So we are certainly hoping that we never have to get back to that point, but if we do, we really would like a building that can speak to having that available to all residents.
So are you saying that you would have swimming pools and things like that at the?
The fitness center, we would add a fitness center space in. We would be able to add a salon, add libraries, add all of those features and designs that can integrate throughout the continuum, but once you're in healthcare, you don't lose that.
Okay.
And I just like, I think it's been said, but I want to confirm that this is all, ownership of the land and operations are all under a single legal entity?
Correct. The Riverwoods Company at Exeter, New Hampshire is a single 501(c)(3), and it owns all parcels.
Okay. And it operates under a single, was it Medicare, a single Medicare license?
Correct. One tax ID number, one Medicare license.
Okay.
And that was, we have actually, over the course of the last several, after the course of the last year, we have actually consolidated all of our Medicare licensed beds into one health center at our Ridge campus. But prior to that, even with them at all three, it was one Medicare number.
Okay. And I guess this is what I would ask for Sharon to give some thought to this if we were to grant variants, and we're not there yet. And I'm not suggesting it, but I want, I'd ask that you give some thought to, you're asking us to treat three separate pieces of land as a single site, and they would, that is, as I know, you're aware, you know, these variants is run with, with the lots. And so I'm, part of my struggle is how those would be tied together in perpetuity, because they would effectively, in my mind, they would need to be for this to continue to operate as one site.
Correct.
So again, I don't know that we're, we're not there yet, but I would ask that you give that some thought, because I think that would, if we were to grant anything, that would, that would be, in my mind, that would be certainly a necessity. So I think that, that answers my questions.
So I had a question. You mentioned earlier that your, your phrase is choose your change, and I guess I would like to ask, have the residents been polled formally to express their opinions on this? I know we've received some sporadic letters, and, and, you know, that doesn't always represent a good cross-section of the opinion. But the community is, you know, even though they don't own their units, they invest in the community when they come in as residents, and that's the model, financial model that you operate under. So these people have made a permanent choice, and I'd like to know how they expressed their choice for change.
I would, I would say to you that the community is probably pretty split on this. Did, your question was, did we poll people? We did not. But we have had multiple meetings with our residents. We started to talk about this in November 2021. We've had, we have people who are vehemently opposed to it. Some of them are here tonight. We have people who totally understand. And, for example, our Woods campus, the Menanak Lodge there is opened in 1994. It was designed in 1990. It's 32-year-old design. It needs to come down.
What's it called? I'm sorry.
It's, Menanak Lodge is our health center.
Okay.
There are folks who live there. There are folks whose, you know, families live there. They, they understand. There are folks who totally understand the healthcare worker staffing crisis and understand the need for us. As a matter of fact, in one of Kim's meetings, a resident said, look, you're concerned about walking down the hallway to see your spouse, I'm concerned about there being a nurse or nurse aide to care for me in the future. So I think it's fair to say on this one, we, that our residents are split. But there are some things where, and there are many things where the resident's opinion matters very strongly. In this case, we see this as an absolute need. We need to provide the best quality of healthcare, and to do that, we need nurses and nurses aides. And centralizing healthcare, in addition to us providing better memory support, physical space, in addition to us providing, as Kim said, the amenities for folks to live their best life, it allows us to provide, to feel much more confident that we'll have centralized leadership and a fewer, number, a need for fewer nurses and nurses aides, just because we have inefficient sizing throughout the three campuses. When you take anything and split it in three, you're going to be inefficient. And if all that did was cost us money, that'd be fine. But, you know, you can't read the news today and understand that there's a drastic need for healthcare workers, and that is just not going to get better. So we have to change.
Can I ask you something? The centers that you have now, are they adequately staffed?
They are, but they are with agency nursing, so you have inconsistent faces. You, it's adequately staffed with nurses and nurses aides working a ton of overtime, working, you know, longer shifts, being called in. So it's not a sustainable future, and I, we're not alone in that. That's, that's the world that we live in today.
Do you foresee not using agency staffing at the centralized location? That would be.
I see, foresee, I foresee using less.
Okay.
And I also, you know, the other opportunity, we have, actually, our, our Vice President of Quality, Cindy Martin, couldn't be here because she's ill, but Kim has her, an email that she sent us, and I think this might address some of those questions.
Current structure and approach to staffing is not, is not currently sustainable. Units are not right-sized to maximize staff, creating a greater need of people who are simply not available and ready to supply. Due to large numbers of open positions or hours needed to be filled due to routine staff time off, along with episodic COVID isolation periods, staff are asked consistently to work late, come in early, or on days off to fill, to fill shifts to meet resident needs. We, of course, use agency staffing as well. The effect on staff is a lack of any real work-life balance and staff fatigue and burnout. While we're happy to have agency in to relieve some of these pressures, they're not familiar to the residents, our team, or the buildings. This often means that staff are carrying a heavier burden and paid less to do so, which then causes resentment. Additionally, agency staffing has the burden of learning three buildings and not just one. This all leads to decreased satisfaction of staff, which impacts overall resident satisfaction. Tired and burdened and decreased satisfaction impacts the quality of care, service, and experience. Staff become focused on the critical need, not necessarily the quality needs, particularly quality of life and experience. Also, a great deal of the clinical leader's daily focus is on finding staff coverage across all three campuses. Staff are often reluctant to pick up shifts in campuses that are not their home base because they are less familiar. This leads to trying to move folks around delicately. It's kind of like staffing Jenga. The leaders are often working the shifts themselves 24/7, and this impedes their ability to focus on other areas and has impacted the ability to recruit and retain qualified leaders. We have had seven directors of nursing leave in three years, and nearly as many assistant directors. We need to provide a structure that is sustainable and where folks can succeed. One centralized healthcare will allow for a more cohesive leadership team deployed in one location to support the staff.
Thanks.
Okay. That, so that's it for our questions. At this time, I'd like to open it up to members of the public.
I think Sharon.
Oh, Sharon, I'm sorry.
We'd also like to have Mr. Brownell, the Chair of our Board of Trustees.
Talk to the microphone. I'm sorry.
Make a few comments too.
I didn't realize you were still doing your presentation. I apologize.
For the record, yeah, I just wanted to have Mr. Brownell, who's the Chair of the Board of Trustees, make a few comments, and that will conclude our presentation. Of course, we'll come back after the comments, too.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to go through all of the things that have already been said, but rather make a comment that the Board of Trustees for Riverwoods is made up of 16 members. Five of those members are resident trustees of the group. Three of those resident trustees are residents of Exeter. Over the months, as we've discussed this at a board level, we've looked at what other healthcare centers are doing in other communities. We've visited some of those. We've had consultants come in and tell us what's happening in the industry, what's changing, what's working, what's not working. We've analyzed all of that. We've obviously read numerous articles about the health centers, industry, what's happening, what's coming in the future, what needs to be done. COVID hit us. We learned a lot during COVID in what we can and cannot do. Justine mentioned some of that on the isolation. How do we, how do we solve that if it happens again? What can we do better? And the board has discussed all of that in depth. Much discussion, much debate. What's the best thing to do? What's the best thing to do for our healthcare residents? What's the best thing to do for our independent living residents? And there always are balances. There's always some that's pros, there's cons, we're back and forth. We've done all that. We've looked at it closely. And at the end of the day, the board voted unanimously that centralized healthcare is the best for our residents, whether they be in healthcare currently or coming in the future. There is so many things that we can do to make it better for our residents today and in the future. I hope, from our board standpoint, that you will approve our request. Thank you.
Can I ask you something?
Sure.
What would the consider, I, I don't know if I understand how the centralized healthcare center would reduce the sense of isolation that came with COVID, because family would be, if there's a spouse, that person would be farther away, and I'd imagine COVID-positive patients are isolated in any.
Right, and I think Justine mentioned that, so I'll let her answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So the way we see it, what happened during, during the height of the pandemic, nobody visited. If you, if you lived independently and you were right down the hall, you still couldn't visit in the healthcare center. The challenge was, there are no real amenities in our healthcare center. So if you were a healthcare resident, you may have lived in assisted living, and maybe you were, you know, perfectly fine, but you, you were living, living in assisted living because you had a, you know, a need for medication reminders. And you were someone who may have used the fitness center on the independent side. You couldn't do that. So what we will do in our new building is add the kind of amenities that are attractive to folks who are living in healthcare. And so when we talk about reducing the sense of isolation, one is having the opportunity to do things within your own campus. Kim described it as a fourth campus. That's exactly how we see it. The second thing is just adding technology that allows, you know, I hate to even think about that being a part of our future, but allowing for technology that allows for those kind of visits in a more, a more appropriate way. So we envision, though we don't have a design yet, but we envision more courtyard space, more outdoor space, to allow for more visiting in that, God forbid, that ever occurred again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would like to open it up to members of the public who would like to speak for, to, or against the application. Anyone who's interested, you can come to the podium. Please state your name and your, your address, and then any comments you may have.
Thank you, Chairman Bond. My name is Bob Cully, and I live with my wife Anne at Boulders, and we've been residents there for three and a half years now. The variance goes against the way the people live there right now. Common practice has been for the Boulders residents to receive healthcare on their own campus. The variance eliminates the lifetime social benefit of remaining on one campus throughout a resident's lifetime. It also doesn't recognize the early-action safety net importance of the campus wellness clinics. And there's been talk on that, but no talk that they would be maintained at their current resource level. The variance is contrary to the public interest. Each campus was designed and sold on the basis of onsite healthcare. Also in the public interest, the locality surrounding Boulders will be impacted by the consolidating healthcare at Ridge. Years of construction will increase traffic on Route 111, Pickpocket Road, and Timber Lane. After construction, the up to 25% increase in Boulders' independent living units will continue to produce increased traffic on Route 111, Pickpocket Road, and Timber Lane. The spirit of the ordinance is not observed. The spirit of the Boulders community is diminished by removing family members and friends from the community. Substantial justice is not done. Again, all Boulders residents have moved to Riverwoods with the understanding that lifetime care would be provided on their campus. Values of the surrounding properties are difficult to resist, but there will be an increase of up to 25% in the independent living population. That one's hard, this is, that one's hard to, to guess, but also because, to the best information that I've had, the siting of the facility, of the consolidated facility, is not set yet. It's gone from, from buying a house up on the hill on the next lot, and then it went to the Ridge location, and most recently, and the last information we've been given is now they're looking down at Campus Crossing, which is down White Oak, right near 111, but still on the Ridge-Boulder side. So I don't know where it's going to be. At least I don't. Lack of enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary The congregate health center design should not be eliminated. The congregate health center design should not be eliminated based on general statements that will offer the highest service, or the care objectives of efficient and effective health services for the multi-campus may be impaired. Well, there are a lot more specifics that might help out a little bit. The proposed use is unreasonable. The variance request is unreasonable based on the above discussion. The Boulders residents moved to the campus with one agreement in their understanding, and that's been switched, or they're trying to switch it now to take the healthcare out of there. On some of the communication back and forth to the campuses with a central facility, we've had comments of, "People can walk or bike." Well, there aren't too many people walking and biking on the roads there, and particularly crossing 111. One suggestion for crossing 111 is, well, looking at maybe a tunnel can be built under The central healthcare is a major policy change. It was announced as a done deal in mid-October of last year at a resident council meeting. There was no announcement sent to the campuses. It was also announced as a done deal and not appealable, that this was it and it was going to happen. The cost savings, there are no details on it. It's too early for a zoning change. There's no final location plan. There's no financial feasibility plan of any substance that's been shared with the residents, and the residents do pay all the bills there. That's where the funds come to operate the place. No project cash flow estimate. And now we're living in a world of some significant interest rate increases. How that affects the plan that exists, as well as existing debt, can raise some questions. I really ask you to strongly consider what's presented and the substance and the detail of what's presented, and not allow this variance at this point in time, anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak, feel free to come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Bob Pryor. I live at 16 Pickpocket Road, which is directly opposite the entrance of Timber Lane, and I've lived in that house for 30 years. I'm concerned, as an abutter, and I'm concerned as a member of the zoning board of adjustment. My concerns, as an abutter, are that the three separate campuses are separate campuses. They have been litigated through this board each time construction has been proposed, when the initial woods was proposed, as well as each of the two additions. And the now, I'm sorry, I don't know Kim's last name, so I have to use her first name, which I know is impolite and unprofessional, but Kim is now using the phrase "fourth campus." We do not have zoning approval for campuses. We have zoning approval for three campuses, each of them distinct. They may have one single corporate entity that owns all three, but they are distinct, physically separate communities with whom I know at least many of the residents identify with their own campus. They may live at Riverwoods, but they live at the woods, or they live at the Boulders, or they live at the Ridge, and they identify with those communities. And I'm sure that there are people who would appreciate the fact that there would be a central facility. I'm sure there are staffing issues, but that should not override either the commitments that Riverwoods has made to the residents that are moving in there, nor the commitments that Riverwoods has made to the community of Exeter, especially to the many, as several people mentioned, including Ms. Vogel, the many single-family homes that are in the neighborhood. As a member of the board, I'm extremely concerned because we have very few specifics, or you, I apologize, you have very few specifics before you. We just heard the phrase 25% increase in the total number of independent living units, i.e. the number of residents. And for someone to stand up here and say, "Oh, we spoke to somebody," I can't remember the gentleman's name, "who did a traffic analysis, and there's going to be no impact." Really? We don't even know how many people there are going to be added, how many residents are going to be added. Of course, there's going to be an impact. It hasn't been quantified. I don't see how a decision can be rendered, as far as a variance is concerned, without understanding the impact of that variance upon the abutters, and we have no specifics before us. So I thank you for letting me speak. I am very concerned as both an abutter and as a long-term member of the zoning board. Thank you.
My name's Roy Chaney. My wife and I have been here for over a year and a half at this point. We moved here from California, chose this place because of something that it had that no other facility that we looked at in terms of CCRCs had what is called a congregate healthcare facility. It was a new term to me. I think that I came to realize that it was, and maybe this is the answer to the question about why it was called a congregate healthcare facility. Back in the history book that we have of this founding of Riverwoods, it was planned specifically to have healthcare included with independent living in one building. And I think that term "congregate" probably came into play at that point in time, and it was used for the variance zoning purposes. We found out about nine months after we moved here that they wanted to have a healthcare center, and, brand-new to everybody, they wanted to move all the assisted living out of the three communities into the new healthcare center. I'm totally against that. We came here specifically and asked the questions. We moved into a cottage, and we asked, would we be able to downsize and move into what we call the big house, the independent living facility? Because at that point in time, one of us was going to end up in assisted living or nursing, and it would be right there. We could walk down the hall. Yes. Maybe not many people do, but there's probably the people who are able with us to see their spouse on a daily, multiple times during the day, think it's, you know, that's why they came here. That's what it's all about. The other issue, there's two issues. One is the licensing. All three facilities, campuses, communities, had a license by the state as nursing homes, and they had an assisted living license. Right now, the Ridge is the only facility that's licensed as a nursing home. The definition that the zoning commission uses, an elderly congregate healthcare facility, requires that there's onsite nursing home has license by the state of New Hampshire. Well, they're not licensed, two of them are not licensed as nursing homes any longer. They have what's known as supported residential care facilities, is what the licenser is for the woods and for the Boulders at this point in time. So there's, I don't know how you reconcile that with the zoning and the licensing and everything, but that's an issue that maybe the state needs to address. With respect to traffic, this analysis that was done by Stephen G. Purnow and company is seriously flawed. They only looked at the number of healthcare workers who would not be going to the woods. They would be going the other way. And they looked at, added 35 new independent living units, the number of people who might be traveling out to 111 or something. And they said there's a net loss in traffic. They did not consider the fact that everyone at the woods who has a significant other or a spouse in a healthcare facility across the highway is going to have to go back and forth. That was not in the study whatsoever. I think there's a tremendous impact to the community based on the fact that you're going to have, if one half of the residents in the healthcare facility are, come from the woods, the woods is twice as large as each of the other two campuses, then there's, that's going to mean that about 72 woods residents will become residents of the healthcare center. So their families, or their friends, or anybody who wants to see them at the woods is going to have to drive across that road, which is a critical intersection. I mean, at night, it's difficult. And I think that poses a safety hazard for the community, as well as this additional traffic on the road going into the woods, which is a residential road, which was not considered at all for the cross-traffic that's going to result from this.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing no one coming to the podium, the applicant would like to come up and respond to any of the comments that were made.
Thank you. I've got a number of points that are going to need to be covered. First of all, while we heard from a number of people here tonight, residents who do not support the proposal, I would remind the board that there are a number of letters that are in your packets that do show support. One of the items that's referenced in the letters that are in support, note the importance and the value of the wellness centers in each of the campuses. There's been some discussion here, and I want to set the record straight. Each campus is going to retain its own wellness center. That is an inaccurate statement that somebody made here earlier, that those are going to be taken away. And I just, I want to clarify for the board, too, because I didn't understand it until a couple of days ago. A wellness center is not the same thing as the health center. The wellness center is what I sort of colloquially refer to as the school nurse. It is, each campus has a little office for people to come in and get sort of minor health issues addressed. That will remain at each campus, and I know some of the letters of support found that to be of extreme value, of an extreme importance to them.
Sorry, Sharon, to interrupt you. Can you give a little bit more detail about how those, you've suggested it's like the school nurse?
Yeah.
How is it staffed?
I'm going to have Kim come over here and describe that, but that will, I just wanted to make the distinction between the health center and the wellness center.
No, that was a question I had, so I'm glad you addressed it.
Each of the wellness clinics is staffed by a licensed nurse practitioner and at least one wellness nurse, which is a registered RN. They provide services primarily to our independent living residents. It may be that they get sent home from the hospital and they need to have blood pressure checks every day. They may need to have urine samples drawn. They may need to do a variety of things. They may need to have a bandage or a wound addressed. So it could be just something independently, on their own, that happens, they're not feeling well. Instead of immediately going to their primary care physician, they could stop by the wellness clinic. We do require that our residents maintain a PCP when they move in and are living independently. But our nurse practitioners also do rounds in the health center as well, and they help move folks through the continuum of care. But that level of service, to be able to walk in almost like sick call, "If you're not feeling well, we can take your temperature for you." Out of our wellness clinics, we can also offer what's called additional enhanced home services. We may have some independent living residents who are starting to become a little less independent, and they might need help with medication management, administering their meds in a medie planner, or checking that they've taken that. The wellness clinics operate under a separate license. That will be maintained in all three of the campuses. That's not going away, and that service remains regardless.
Could you, what type of licensing is that? I'm just looking at the definition that's at issue here, and the requirement is for onsite nursing home facilities as licensed by the state of New Hampshire.
That's not the same thing as our wellness clinics. So our wellness clinics operate what's called a home health license. For the purposes of our health centers, we have two separate licenses. We have one, which is called an 805, which is our assisted living license. And then when we are talking about skilled nursing, that operates under an 803 license. And the home health is an 809 or an 822.
Okay. Couple of other points that I wanted to make. First of all, with regard to the traffic report that was done, really, the focus of that was to try to get a sense that, of what would happen by virtue of the fact that there weren't going to be nursing staff at the woods any longer. I understand the point that the speaker was making about the fact that there may be visitors that need to go from the woods across the street to the Ridge or the centralized health center campus. But I don't think that it's a fatal flaw that the traffic report didn't necessarily take that into account, because frankly, a lot of those people from the woods may already be going over to the Ridge or to the Boulders for some of the many activities that have been described here earlier today. And they may be coming and going by means of the shuttle service that we're talking about. So I really don't think that the absence of any visitors coming from the woods, going across the street, undercuts the significant finding that Purnow makes that the absence of the healthcare workers is not going to make any significant difference to how this is going to work.
So I always find his reports difficult to understand, to be honest, and they show up in every application that involves traffic.
Right.
And they never really make a ton of sense to me, so maybe it's me. But I believe the description of increased transportation alone indicates more trips. And I didn't see how that was accounted for. So the description made it sound like substantially more trips. I guess I'm just wondering, and that people would be driving their own vehicles. So I think the description indicated there would be much more coming and going between campuses to enable visitation. Is that in there, and I just didn't understand it, or is it not in there? Do you know?
I'm not certain that I do. However, what I will say is that regardless of what's in there or not in there, I guarantee you that when it comes time to doing, if we get this approval tonight, and let me just, I don't mean to deflect this, but one of the comments that was made earlier on today was that you shouldn't take action tonight. It's too early, because we aren't giving you enough information as to where this is going to be, what the design is going to look like and so forth. And that's just, respectfully, that's an inappropriate response, I think, for this board to take, because we need to know on a threshold conceptual level whether or not this concept of having a centralized healthcare center is going to pass muster with this board before we spend the time and the money to come back to this board and to the planning board with a full-fledged design. At that time, if any of all these, if these events take place, that's when we will come back with a traffic report, which is going to address all manner of the traffic impacts from the central healthcare and/or any impacts from additional independent living units that may be over the woods, et cetera. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that, and I apologize, I can't put my hands right on that specific point in Purnow's report, but I guess what I'm suggesting is that I don't think that that's anything fatal for purposes of this board's discussion tonight, because all of that's going to be discussed at a more appropriate time when we actually have a design.
Okay.
Okay? So I think that the licensing issue Kim just addressed, the, I did just talk a little bit about the timing here. I do want to talk about, I appreciate, of course, as I always do, the comments of Bob Pryor. Pryor, but I do have to, to indicate that the 25% increase in independent living units is not anything that we said. Somebody else said that, but we're, we're not saying that. I also would suggest again, with the greatest amount of respect, that Mr. Pryor is certainly free to speak here tonight as in a butter, but not as a member of the ZBA, in terms of trying to tell you what, as ZBA members, you should be doing, since he has recused himself. So I would, I would caution the board to, to bear those thoughts in mind. Finally, with regards to the chairman's concern earlier, I have been giving this, this some thought since you've raised the issue. And I guess, I guess what I would say is that the, the institution of Riverwoods is one in which all of the, the big issues, which always, of course, boil down to money in many respects, the financing, the mortgage, the debt carrying, the, you know, construction costs for various things, all of that is inextricably intertwined with all three of the campuses right now. And I think as a practical matter, the notion that somehow these three campuses would be decoupled in, in a way, is just not practical because of the, of the, of the, of the existing infrastructure with which they currently operate. I, I just don't see that happening. You know, we have discussed the possibility of maybe merging the two lots. That's something that you may ask about, but the problem is, we still have the woods across the street. So I, I would suggest that certainly we are amenable to a condition of approval that if this board is inclined to grant this approval tonight, which would predicate their approval on getting any additional approvals from the planning board or the ZBA for the, the actual design of this. But I'm, I'm struggling to, to understand any kind of a practical suggestion that I can make to address the chair's concern, other than to say that it's just not likely that it ever would be an issue. And Riverwoods, as I believe Justine mentioned, is a nonprofit, and the, to the extent that there may ever be some sort of future 10, 20 years from now, transfer, it would most likely go, and Justine will jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I think, to another, another nonprofit agency.
I think the concern that I have is that it would go to two other nonprofit entities, or even a private entity, that, because what, what you're asking us to do is basically to shift, to apply the services that are required under the definition of elderly congregate healthcare facilities on a totally separate lot. And I, you know, I think to the extent that works, it works if there is uniformity of operations. That's ultimately my concern, and, and how those get tied together, because as you know, this, any approval, if granted, runs with the property and does not run with the ownership, and the ownership can change, and very well may. I mean, there may be financing reasons to change it, and we're talking about, you know, how long has Riverwoods been there? Talking about a significant history. So I understand your point. I'm just trying to think through how we can potentially address that.
So the, the two things that I would add to that are, one thing that Sharon didn't say is that all of our land and buildings are collateral, and we have one mortgage. So it's all, all of the land is collateral for that. So splitting that out, well, it may be possible, but it seems highly unlikely. The other part is licensure in the future. If we were to sell off, like, say, if the concern was we would sell off the woods campus, no one could get, A, we have a contract with our residents who live there that we're required to provide healthcare, and B, a new organization wouldn't be able to get licensure if we were distinct, you know? So I don't, I don't know how to, I'm perfectly aligned with what you're saying, like, link them. If we could link them, if 111 didn't exist, I'd be all for it. I don't know how to do that.
Sure. I don't either, which is why I tried to make Sharon.
Yeah. I just think the, the practicality of the concern is really, the risk is really, really small.
Sure. Thank you.
But it does run with the land, and if Riverwoods were to, for some reason, no longer serve its purpose, or collapse, or whatever, we've, we've made a decision that would run with whoever were to take over, and that's, so if we're combining the three campuses for terms of approvals, then they do, in my mind, I feel like there's the problem, because we need to link them in perpetuity, just like the approval runs in perpetuity. So I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit as well.
And I guess what I would say is, the, we could never, our contract for the folks who live at the woods, because it's the woods, the ridge and the boulders campuses could be, that, those parcels could be combined. It's the woods that is the challenge. And if that ever was separated, we wouldn't be keeping our contractual obligation to the woods residents. So that's, that would keep us from doing that.
And some of your residents feel this proposal isn't keeping your contractual obligation, so I, you know.
Well, I mean, you just read the contract, and we are. I mean, that's a, that's a...
Well, wasn't, isn't a big draw, wasn't, hasn't a big draw of Riverwoods always been that you have onsite healthcare?
Yeah.
If your spouse needs to go into a nursing home, they're going to be down the road or down the hall. So isn't that part of?
Yeah.
The contract that is now being changed?
Well, the contract doesn't say, you know, in the exact same building, right? But...
But it's the expected, understood expectation.
For sure. We're not standing here and saying to you, hey, this is no change. This is a huge change. All we're saying to you is it's a, it's a necessary change, and it's a change that we will make work well, and we will actually make work in a way that provides better healthcare. It's, oftentimes, people compare A, A being today, to B, what we're seeing in the future. But the reality is, A doesn't exist anymore. You know, it's now, you're comparing B and C. And what we're looking for is the best way to provide healthcare in the future, and we believe we need to do that with one centralized healthcare. But you're not hearing me say this isn't a big change, it's a huge change.
How many residents are there in all, in the total of the three campuses, please?
About 600.
Was it once 800? I, for some reason, remember that now.
No. Within our, all of our communities, there's about 1,000, but Riverwoods Exeter has about, about 600.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that that's all I need to say, unless there's any more questions from any members of the board?
There are not. I see Mr. Plummer has a, has a comment. We, we had closed the public, but do you...
Well, that's my question, sir. Excuse me. Yeah. I think the part looks worse than it is.
Here, do you want this?
No, thank you.
Okay.
My name is Pete Cameron.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some of you I've met before. My concern is that, I thought we were talking about the woods, and that there's, is there going to be a separate hearing, or a separate proceeding with respect to the boulders? Because there are those who have comments with respect to the boulders that may not, may be different than the comments that might be placed before you with respect to the woods.
Thank you.
Have we merged the two hearings? I must have fallen asleep back.
We did not formally. No, I thank you for that, and you are correct. The applicant presented them together. That happened, I think, without much discussion, so...
Well, that's what I must have missed.
Yes.
Because I thought we were going to have a separate hearing, open hearing, on the boulders application.
What I would recommend, what I'm proposing, unless the applicant has a separate presentation they need, they wish to make, is that we would help in, I would open public comment on the boulders.
Thank you.
Because I want to make sure that everyone has a chance, and I'm glad you brought that up, because I did want to make sure that occurred. And I, and again, if the applicant has a separate presentation, you're welcome to make it, but I believe you've already made your presentation for both applications before us tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chair. My presentation was made with regard to both of those parcels, and I do know that many of the letters that came in were from boulders residents, I believe. But certainly, if there are, if there was any confusion, if there are people that want to speak directly to the woods application as opposed to the boulders, of course, by all means, they should be able to speak.
Yes. So what I will do is, I'm going to open up the public comment. Again, anyone who wishes to speak on the boulders application, this is your chance to do so, and please come up.
Okay, but, but you're, you're going to vote separately?
We are going to vote separately.
So that, do you propose to take a vote on the woods side first, or are you going to take it together?
We are going to take separate votes. What I'm proposing, because the applicant has presented both, made their presentation for both applications, I think it's in everyone's best interest that we take the public comment on both applications, so that the board has a, you know, full view and is heard from everyone on both applications, and then we would take separate votes on each.
Okay, well then, when may I make my...
I would ask you to make it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you can be the first person.
Something, yeah. I need to get something out of my briefcase.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And just to be clear, so this is public comment, there are two applications before us. This is public comment on the second application, which is, for the, the boulders, it is the, a request for the same, same variance, which would be, rather than to permit the onsite nursing, offsite for the woods, this is for the boulders.
Mr. Chairman, again, I identified myself, I've, my wife and I have lived at the boulders. We're pioneers. We came in May of 2010, and that's almost 13, more than 13 years ago. What I would like the board to have on the record, and I'll be happy to supply a copy to you and to counsel for, for Riverwoods, is a copy of the order approved by the planning board in 2008, approving the construction of the boulders. And I will pass that out, because I think it's pertinent, and there is pertinent in that language of that order. And I will read that, it's important. They approved the above-captured application, which is the, oh, here, I should ask someone if they wouldn't mind.
I'll come and get it.
Well, I'm, I'm limited in my ability. Not everyone, Nancy, I need one.
I only need three. Thank you. If there are enough, we're...
I made, I made enough.
Do you have a copy?
I think I must here somewhere.
We'll take two, and if there's extras. We don't have to make copies.
Okay. What I would direct your attention to, and I apologize, somewhere I have the third one. I would, this is a letter addressed, dated June 5, 2008, addressed to Charlie Tucker, who was for, was your senior counsel, I believe, Sharon, in your firm. I'm going to read a paragraph, and it's a brief paragraph, but I'm going to say, "This letter will serve as an official confirmation that the planning board at its May 8, 2008 hearing meeting voted to approve the above-captured application," and that was for the Riverwoods Company at the boulders, "to, for the construction of an additional elderly congregate care health facility, including," and these are the important words, "independent living units, skilled care units, and assisted living units within the central facility." And then it went on to say duplexes, cottages, et cetera, et cetera. The important words are independent living units, skilled care facilities, and associated within the central facility. Now, I would submit to you, that's suggesting that there is another order that's going to have to be addressed in this context. And that's all I had to say. Thank you for taking the time to...
Sir, I didn't catch your name at the beginning. Could you repeat it, please?
I'm sorry.
Could you repeat your name? I didn't catch it.
Cameron. C-A-M-E-R-O-N.
Thank you.
And your address.
I sit in that chair occasionally. I'm a member of the planning board.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Then I will have to recuse myself.
Yes.
I should have recognized you from television, but I did.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Cameron, could you provide your address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. 15 Sandstone Way.
Thank you.
Is one of the cottages, and I have a couple of neighbors here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this application? And again, this would be the, this would be the close of a public comment for both, for both applications. So I would ask that anyone who's interested in speaking on either of the Riverwoods applications to do so now. All right. Seeing no one coming to the podium, I'll, would the applicant like to...
Can I ask you a quick... If you want, yes, sir. I don't know if it's a lot of...
I think we can ask the...
So I guess I've been on a tour of the facility, and I remember hearing about it over the years, and I believe that the whole financial structure is tied up with the promises made to the residents and their investments. And I guess I'm uncomfortable with the decision not to even seek the approval of the insurance board over this. It's a big change, and maybe I'm wrong, but I guess I'm uncomfortable with that not being part of this application.
And, and what is it specifically that we might do? I'm not necessarily saying that we will, but what, what could we do that would make you more comfortable with this? Are you looking for documentation, or...
Well, I guess if, I think it should be their call, the insurance commission's call, whether or not a, a permission is sought or necessary. To self-determine that it's not, I guess, seems to me a bit of a stretch.
Well, go ahead.
But you're the attorney, so I'm just trying to discuss this.
Sure.
Because it's a big decision that affects many, many people, and honestly, I understand both sides. I recognize the world has changed, but these people made investments here.
I understand.
Based on a understanding of, of what their financial future was going to look like, and what their healthcare future was going to look like.
Right. So if you'll give me a minute, first of all, there was an attorney that was consulted, it was not me, and, to, to address the, the issue, and it is my understanding that it was determined that, that no sort of process was going to be required with regard to the insurance licensing. I would ask Justine to, to speak to this. You know, the only thing I can suggest is that we can provide additional documentation from, from our attorney to verify, if I understand your question correctly, is, A, is it necessary to, to have an insurance review? And if that's the question, then I think the simple solution would be that we would simply provide you documentation from the attorney who, who rendered that opinion, that it's not necessary.
Okay.
Would that suffice?
I don't know, but it certainly would...
Fair enough.
Would go a long way.
Yeah. I, I think, I think similarly, if, you know, I, the contracts between the Riverwoods and the residents are ultimately not the purview of this board, and I do not want to get in the middle of that. However, if, if we were to grant an approval, I would want to know that we are granting an approval that can, that can go forward, and can go forward without additional state, you know, state approvals. So I do think whatever you can provide would be helpful to answer that question, whether it's an actual, you know, determination from the insurance commission, or an attorney, you know, an attorney opinion, either would be helpful to have in the record.
Let me ask you a question. Is, is that something that might be crafted into a, a suitable condition of approval, that we provide that to you, or is that something that you would want to see before rendering a decision? Obviously, my preference would be a condition of approval.
Laura, what's, I mean, it's...
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm no expert in this matter, so I'm...
Nor am I.
I'm... I'm, you know, having a little trouble coming up with concrete, you know, edges to the request. I don't really know, I just know that it's a very big decision, and it feels, I feel very uncomfortable making this big decision with only three members here, you know, without all the information that seems like it would be relevant, so.
I, yeah.
My preference, and whether it's a requirement or not, my preference would be to read an opinion.
Would that affect our decision?
Is that acceptable to have taken that opinion and then present that to the board?
Because it affects the whole community.
Insurance.
It's.
Then, yes, we will do that, we will, we will provide you with further information to document the fact that the license, or that the insurance element of this is addressed, and we would like to, the only thing I guess we would request, because this has had a long life shelf, shelf life, is if, oh, boy, if we could possibly do this for the next meeting?
Sure.
Yes?
If you were to continue tonight, I'd expect you to be at the, we would have you at the next meeting.
So, I know this is not, you know, official, but I did just text our attorney who's provided that opinion, and he is confirming that opinion and would provide that to us. So if we, if you were willing to have that be a condition of approval, that would allow us to at least not come back, which would be lovely.
Okay, I mean, I think we can discuss it. I don't really know what to say on the spot, but.
What I can say, it's ultimately your, I mean, it's ultimately the applicant's decision whether you want to go forward with, or, you know, or wait to have that, what, you would be, you know, assuming we get through everything else tonight, well, either way, you would be, you know, you would, if you were continued, you would be on the next agenda for the January meeting.
I'm only chuckling because I'm supposed to be somewhere else, too, but I'll just have to drive fast.
Are you asking to be, oh, were you literally asking to be first, so you could be at two meetings, or is that?
I don't know what I'm asking.
Got it, understood.
We'll make it happen, we'll make it happen. We will get you the documentation, and we will be back here on January 17th to have you render a decision.
That would be, that would be great, and I guess if you're, if you're bringing that and you can provide, and I know there was an, well, it's up to you, there was an open question on the traffic study, I'd leave it up to you if you want to, if you want to provide any additional information.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, okay.
So I would, I would entertain, it sounds like the applicant is willing to continue to the January.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth meeting, I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that we accept their request to continue and put it on the January agenda.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion to continue January 17th, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Are you continuing both?
We are continuing both, so let me, yeah, let's, so, let's make a motion, let's do a formal motion for both. So I would ask that we, let's formally make a motion to continue the application, application in ZBA case 22-15 to the January 17th meeting.
Okay, let me try that again, then. So I move that we accept the applicant's willingness to move, to continue the case 22-15 and case 22-16 to our January ZBA meeting.
January 17th.
January 17th ZBA meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
All right, is this, is it necessary, is that what the documentation that they're going to provide, is that going to be necessary to our decision, or, I mean, many times we decide something, and then if there is additional approval that an applicant needs to actually put the plan.
So.
And I don't know, I don't know that much about this, so I will.
We have not made that determination, the applicant had the, you know, it was up to the applicant to decide whether to go forward without it, and potentially as a condition, or to continue so that we had an opinion in hand, and they chose to request to continue.
Okay, but we asked for that information, right?
We, yes.
And we asked for it because.
My understanding of how the investment of the residents and the contract works is that it involves various elements, and I just was curious if there was permission needed to change that, just like they need permission from us to change the real estate aspect of it. I'm wondering if there was permission needed, I'm actually quite surprised if they're saying it's not, but I'm not an attorney, and.
And, you know, and we know that there will be, there'll be additional permission needed by the planning board, that we can condition that.
Yeah.
What we don't know is, and I want to make sure that if we, you know, any decision we make is.
We've spent a lot of time addressing it, so if a decision can be made.
I think we are at the point, they've asked for a continuance, I think we should vote on that.
Okay, okay.
So, and we have a motion pending.
Okay, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Laura, would you make a motion for the second application as well?
I thought I included them both, but, okay, so I move that we continue the application for ZBA case 22-16 for the property located at 5 Timber Lane, to be continued to the January 17th meeting of the zoning board of adjustment.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. We'll see you on January 17th. Okay, why don't we take a quick break, and then we'll continue with the, the application for 12 Little River Road.
I am not sure either. So you're Lori Cheney, and you're.
As winter approaches, the likelihood of a New England snowstorm is growing. The town of Exeter will send out snowplows in the event of a snowstorm. In order to keep the town of Exeter safe on the roads this winter, a winter emergency parking ban will be enforced. The winter emergency parking ban is in effect from December 1st, 2022, until March 15th, 2023, from 12:00 a.m. midnight to 6:00 a.m. Parking will not be allowed on town-owned streets and right-of-ways during this time in the early morning. The town has the authority to tow any vehicle in violation of the parking ban. There are, however, specific parking lots that are allowed to be used overnight. The allowed parking lots are as follows: The municipal parking lot on Water Street; The train station parking lot; The front street parking lot. This parking ban will allow the snowplows full use of the road to remove the dangerous snow and ice. Make sure to follow all parking guidelines put out by the town of Exeter by visiting exeternh.gov. Stay safe out on the roads this season, and happy holidays.
I feel like this year was a really successful year. We raised over $50,000, which is a record year. Last year, we had a record year, and I thought, well, we're not going to, we might not hit that again, and we surpassed it. I always say it takes a village because from, you know, Dan Jackson from RJ's Donates All the Trees, we have local organizations and school clubs and just even just all citizens.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your patience tonight. It's already been a long night. We're still going. We are going to now hear the application of Jewett Construction on behalf of Craig Jewett for a change of use to permit the existing church on the property at 12 Little River Road to be used as a special exception for Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted uses in Article 5, Section 5.2A, Montessori Early Childhood Education Center. Properties in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map 6290. We do have the full five members, and so each of the members sitting up here will be deliberating and voting on the application tonight. The applicants prepared to start their presentation? That'd be great.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Paige Libby. I'm with Joneson Beach Engineers here representing Jewett Construction and Little Tree Education. Sarah Greenshields, the owner of Little Tree Education, is also with me, and Nick Jewett with Jewett Construction as well. So this is 12 Little River Road. It's the former Cavalry Baptist Church. This is a 4.4-acre property within the R2 Single Family Residential Zone at the end of Little River Road, which is off of Brentwood Road, for those of you who may not be familiar with this location. So what we're here tonight for is a special exception for a change of use for this property. What we're looking to do is change the use from that of the existing Baptist Church to a proposed childcare facility for Little Tree Education. Little Tree Education is a daycare facility. They have two locations currently in Dover and Madbury, and we actually just recently got a third location approved over in Greenland. So they are expanding and looking to provide childcare to families in Exeter and families around the seacoast area. So the existing building on this property is a 5,000-square-foot building, which would be sufficient to have classrooms for up to 80 students. And what we found is that this building really is perfect for conversion. It has good bones, and all we need to do is some minor renovation work and some facade updates to get it ready to go to serve families of Exeter with childcare. And the church, one thing to point out is the church has actually had childcare since the late '90s. There's not a whole lot of documentation about that through the state because at that time, there wasn't as many licensing requirements for childcare as there is today. So in our search, in Little Tree's search for a building similar to this to convert to childcare, this really is the first one that we've found that can be quickly renovated and provide a speed-to-market childcare facility for families in Exeter. So one thing to note about this is that there really is very limited site work, if any site work at all needed. We really would just be renovating the building to provide this service. So with that, I can turn it over to Sarah, and she will outline what Little Tree provides, and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Sarah Greenshields. I own and operate Little Tree Education. We have two locations right now, one in Madbury and one in Dover. We are a school for babies. That's what we like to say. So we serve children as little as six weeks through six years. One thing that's, or two things that differentiate us from other childcare centers. One, we follow the Montessori philosophy. So Exeter used to have a Montessori school, but you don't have one right now. So there's a gap in the market for a quality Montessori program, and we're excited to fit that bill. And then the second piece is that we really cater to infants and toddlers. As many of you know, the childcare crisis in the U.S. is ginormous. I think it's estimated that 30,000 childcare centers closed during the pandemic, and we have probably 300-plus families on our waitlist currently, some of those coming from Exeter, Newmarket for sure. Exeter is a town that has approximately 700 babies born each year, so there's a real need for infant care. And we want to be a place that families can bring their little ones. We did receive some letters from the abutters, and I'm super happy to address, you know, all of the items that were raised. I think one of the big one is the volume of traffic coming onto the property. So although COVID was horrible, one of the blessings that came out of it is that we started a reservation system for our families. So at our existing schools, families are required to sign up for a drop-off time and a pickup time, and we cap that at 10 families per 15-minute increment. So that way, there's never any congestion. And then the other piece is about 60% of our families have siblings. So the number of vehicular trips is actually reduced because of the siblings that we have at the school.
60% of it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can't always predict how often people are having babies, but we've, at this time, there's an upward trend of siblings coming closer together from our experience, at least over the past five years or so. Let's see, you know, just like a church, a childcare center is a community-type center. You know, we really strive to build a community for our families. You know, we live in a really busy, crazy world, and so developing friends and connections, you know, within your school community is really, really important. We have very vibrant parent communities. One thing, though, that has come from COVID is that we no longer do all-school events. We limit our events to classroom-specific events. So, for example, this past weekend, Santa came, and traditionally, we would just say, "We're going to be open from 9:00 until noon. Everybody come." But now, we're limiting the traffic again. So we did infants from 9:00 until 9:30, then toddlers from 9:30 until 10:00, and then primary after that. So having a lot of little ones, especially with families at one time, can be a lot. So we know that it's, you know, nice to kind of space them out. We, like Paige said, the building is amazing. I'm sort of a mid-century modern junkie myself, so this building is phenomenal. The bones are great. It has an open floor plan right now. We hope to divide it into four classrooms, serving infants, what we call twos, primary one, and then primary two. One of the hallmarks of Montessori is having mixed age groups. So you'd have young, the little ones, who are there to sort of emulate the big kids, and then the big kids are there to model for the little ones. And childcare is an essential part of our infrastructure. We will be located next to two other childcare centers, both of which are full and have waitlists. So this opportunity, this church, is truly a blessing, and we really hope that we can be a good match for the town of Exeter and continue to offer really awesome jobs to our teachers and professional growth for our educators.
Before you go, I have a couple of questions. May, too.
Sure.
And some of these may be for Paige. So you've talked a little bit about hours of operation. I know that with some of the concerns raised by the abutters are, you know, after-hours events, things like that. Could you talk about normal hours of operation and also whether there'll be any events outside of those?
Sure, absolutely. So we operate 7:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. The bulk of our families, they drop off between 7:30 and 8:45. We require that all families are in the building by 9:00 o'clock, simply because we start our concentrated work period at that time. So we like to have all the families in then. We do offer a half-day schedule, which ends at 12:30. About 15% of our families utilize that option. And then we have a short day, which is at 4:00, and that's the majority of our population. So that pickup window starts at 3:30, and then our end of day is 5:30, and we generally have about, you know, 10 children or so. We do not offer before-care or after-care. We do really, you know, although we are a childcare center, and we do have somewhat extended hours, we do really pride ourselves on being a school. So we sort of operate more in those reduced hours. As far as after-hours activities, we offer one professional development event each month for our staff, which is generally after-hours or on the weekends. And then family events, we have, there's probably six or eight scheduled. And those generally happen either, you know, on the weekend or, you know, early, right after. Like, we do our graduation, for example, at 4:00, and everyone's gone by 5:30. So we don't generally extend beyond the 5:30 time.
I'm sorry, did you say six or eight in a year? Is that what?
Events, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Where it's sort of like an all-school. But we never actually have everyone come at one time. We would do the staggered-type thing. So for graduation, for example, it would just be our graduating families that would attend.
You said 7:00 a.m. to 5:30. How many days per week?
Monday through Friday.
Nothing on weekends?
Nope.
Well, but you just mentioned that there are some events on weekends, a few times a year.
A handful of times a year, yeah.
Okay.
And approximately how many staff will you have?
So for this facility, I think we're estimating 15 staff members.
And I apologize if I missed it. How many kids do you anticipate adding?
We're hoping to become a licensed center for 80 children, approximately.
So several of the accommodations that you've been able to make, such as 10 pickups and drop-offs per 15-minute block, were in response to the current pandemic. Are you willing to make a commitment that that would continue?
That's what we do at both of our school locations.
No, but continue long, forever?
Absolutely. It's been the biggest blessing out of COVID. You know, we really love to have our families socialize and interact, but at drop-off and pickup, it's a stressful time for families. It's a stressful time for kiddos. So having very specific scheduled increments works really well for everybody.
What has your experience been of most of the parents honoring that?
For the most part, I mean, I think that there are, well, let me just say this. If we open the door and no, and they're not there, we'll open the door again 15 minutes later. So sometimes parents will get frustrated that they've missed that window, and then they have to wait another 10 minutes before we open the door again. But that's usually, you know, once you get used to it, you understand how we operate. And as we onboard families, they're instructed to do this, so it's just a part of their routine. They know nothing other than.
But they are waiting in their car, with the car running in the winter?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And I believe, I believe the application indicated that there would be no queuing off-site.
Correct.
So, and just to clarify that, that, so this is an oddly shaped property that's subject to an easement. So if you could maybe, I don't know, if we could turn that around. Just want to make sure, are we talking about, you know, when we talk about off-site, are we talking about with, including within the shared private right-of-way? Or would it be all within basically the parking, the upper parking area?
So the parents would actually park and then get out of their cars. So they would be, like, lined up waiting for drop-off. They don't have any, anything like that where the parents were all lining up in a loop and then dropping off?
You should be at the microphone.
Yeah, but thank you, Bob. Sorry. Again, otherwise, the TV doesn't pick you up.
Yeah, sorry. So to answer that question, they don't, they don't line up in a loop to drop off. They actually park in the parking spaces. So there's no, like, lined-up cars waiting for drop-off with her facilities.
Okay.
Is there, sorry, Lauren, go ahead.
You said it quickly, but you said, I think, something about no after and before care. I just wanted to clarify. So you don't have after-school programs or early-morning drop-off programs before kids get picked up to go to school or something like that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so some programs will operate so that they allow elementary-age children to be on-site before the elementary school day starts. And then again, at the end of the day, we do not offer that type of program.
And you would commit to that as a condition?
Yep, that's our motto. Yep.
May, go ahead.
Would you just explain again the pickup and drop-off of the children? The parents drive in, do they park, turn the ignition off?
Yep.
Take their child to the front door?
Correct. And then we greet them at the front door with the parent, and we say goodbye for the day, and we'll see you after school.
Then when they come to pick up, the parent parks the car and then goes to the front door?
Correct.
And then comes back?
Okay, yep. And because we serve infants and toddlers, and there's a lot of car seats involved, many of which can be tricky to get in and out of, so we really leave that to the parents' responsibility. So that's why we have the parents get the child in and out of the vehicle.
And the parents don't come inside and hang out for 20 minutes and?
Correct.
They'll settle?
Yes.
Okay.
And, I mean, so, you know, there are, there are some children and some parents that love, you know, to be social, and so that's why we do those six to eight events each year. And really and truly, the morning greeting time, so say it's an 8:15 drop, the parents will start to gather at about 8:10, and they all sort of socialize and interact at that drop-off time as well, which is nice.
So I know when my kids were little, they would do like a parents' night, where we would come and play with the Play-Doh and the different stations or whatever, and that was in the evening. But you're saying your events would be within the 5:30 timeframe?
Yeah, we, because we really, we have so many infants and toddlers in particular, you know, bedtime routine for a toddler can start at 6:30. So we want to make sure everyone is home by 6:00, and hopefully, they have a crock pot going and dinner's ready. So then they can head right off to bed.
Good goal.
Yep.
This may be a question for Joneson Beach. Do you have any changes or alterations planned to either the structure or to the parking?
So we do not have any, any changes at all planned to the site, parking-wise.
Strictly internal?
Yes, strictly to the building. Nick can speak more to the building renovations itself. They'll be doing some exterior facade changes, removing the steeple, obviously, from the church and things of that nature, new windows and interior renovations, but no site changes are planned whatsoever.
Okay. No drainage changes, no parking changes, permeable surfaces, none of that's going to change at all?
Nope, the impermeable surface will stay identical to what it is today.
And any exterior play area, where would that, where would that be?
So there actually is one in the back. I don't know if you have to expand it a bit with a new fence, but... We would want to expand it. What's there is technically large enough for our licensed capacity, but we probably want to increase the size of it. And they, they did have childcare in the church at some point, but they have removed the playground equipment, so it's just a chain-linked fenced area. And I do know one of the concerns was property values. Our schools are like mint. I am a perfectionist. I love making our schools look beautiful. In fact, I got a text message today from our Madbury, a neighbor in Madbury, and they are pregnant, and they want to get on our waitlist. So we really pride ourselves on having beautiful buildings. We want lovely flowers. We want beautiful shrubs. We, we want it to be a beautiful place for the children to go to school.
Would one of you point out on the map where the play area would be for the benefit of the abutters as well as the board?
Yeah, so it's right behind the building.
And it is, just for the record, on sheet C2, which is the second sheet, and it is shown.
Okay. Existing fenced area. Thank you.
The parking lot, are you going to resurface it, Rita?
So our, our goal right now is to get open as quickly as possible. So we would prefer not to resurface it because it's in okay condition as, as it is right now. But it's certainly something that we could consider. The parking lot's actually bigger than either parking lot at both of our schools. So we know that there's ample parking, and it's a smaller facility than our existing schools.
Now, there's another building on the property, or is it not?
It's the shed.
No, I think she means the home to the left, the shared drive.
Yeah, so there is a, there's a separate house, but it's actually now on a separate lot. It was subdivided, I believe, last year. We weren't involved with that aspect of, of the project, but the, the house was subdivided off from the church. So it's, that's now entirely separate and not part of this project.
And I believe that came through this board at one point.
Yes, I believe they needed, they might have needed a frontage variance.
That's a separate.
At that time. So there's, there's an easement between the two lots for access.
There's also a gas easement.
There is.
Telephone and gas easement. Okay. And there's a pipeline under there?
Correct.
I have another question about the hours. When do the pickup, when does the pickup in the afternoon, at the end of the day, start?
So for our 4:00 pickup, we start at 3:30.
Okay.
And then for our 5:30 pickup, we start at 4:30, so an hour ahead of time.
So you said there's a half-day option, some people half-day morning, some half-afternoon?
Uh, no, no half, so if the children come and, they all come in the morning, and then if they leave at 12:30, we don't have any other children that come in for a half-day in the afternoon. Otherwise, they would be disappointed because they'd come for nap time.
So 80 children is the maximum at any given enrollment period?
Yep.
And that would occur in the morning hours?
Yep.
And, and the 80 is based on space and license?
It's based on the square footage and the calculation that DHHS uses. Although, and we always say approximately because DHHS, they'll come in, the state licenser will come in with an actual tape measure and measure the space. And then you're given a license number based upon their measurements. They'll look at your floor plans ahead of time, but they will still do a physical.
No, that's helpful. I'm just trying to understand where the 80 came from and what the restrictions would be.
And I'm assuming there's going, well, maybe not, because it was a childcare center in the past, but there's a lot of, like, fire safety and a lot of regulations around daycare.
Yeah, and I have been in touch with, with the building inspector, so we're happy to comply with whatever code requirements there are. We have, all of our schools have two means of egress out of every single classroom. That is, will be true with this program as well. The building currently does not have fire suppression, and we just, we haven't investigated if it's at the threshold in which it needs it, given the number of egress options there are. We have one school that has fire suppression and one that does not, but we're happy to comply either way.
Then you would, I'm sorry, go ahead, Martha.
I was just wondering about delivery trucks. Do you have many coming in and going?
So our main delivery drop-off location is actually our Greenland property, and then we have a school van that couriers to our other locations. I do expect that W.B. Mason would be doing, like, toilet paper delivery and paper towel, that kind of stuff. And that's usually once every other week. And then for trash, we have that removed once per week.
And food?
Food, we, we do Hannaford-to-go, so it's usually like a car that delivers groceries.
Would you be the owner or the tenant?
I am going to be both.
And again, it's for the drop-off and I guess the pickup, too, just in terms of traffic coming and going. If you have, if you do have 80 kids being dropped off in the morning, 10 kids every 15 minutes from 7:30 to 8:45, that doesn't really fit in 80. Would you make it more people coming for 15 minutes?
We open at 7:00 a.m. with the busiest period, so it's like at 7:00 a.m., we might have, like, five or six that sign up. Exactly. And then the 10 blocks get full after that.
Okay, thank you.
What we have done at our Dover school is we separated infants enter through one door and primary enters through another door. door and primary enters through another door, and we're exploring that option here as well because it, sometimes it can work better because babies are tougher to hand off in a group.
Thank you.
Yep.
I assume that you've taken into account all these doors, locking them and keeping them locked?
Yep, so we will work with the local police and fire departments before we begin any sort of modification to make sure that it meets their safety requirements. And generally, we design fire evacuation routes with the fire department as well as, you know, in the case of the lockdown, lockdown-type drills.
I'm thinking more of an armed shooter.
Exactly, yeah.
Arrangement.
Yep. So the doors, the exterior doors are all locked from the outside, but we have breakaway bars, you know, on the inside so someone can get out. But not from the classrooms because the classrooms have levers, so the children don't get out. We, we do sort of like a double layer with all of our classrooms. That's pretty typical in early childcare ed.
On your waiting lists, how many people, roughly speaking, are from Exeter?
That is a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I could certainly find out. And even if they're, if they're not from Exeter, I can tell you that the other childcare centers in Exeter also have waitlists. And I do feel that because Monta, you know, there was a Montessori program that was, that was here in Exeter for years and years and really did thrive, I was very sad to see it close, so it, you know, crept up on my list because I really feel that Exeter needs that Montessori void filled, particularly for infants and toddlers.
And where are your other locations? Dover?
Yep, so we have one location that's near Liberty Mutual in Dover, so on the north side of town, and then I have a second location in Madbury, which is equal distance between Dover and Durham on Route 108.
Did I just hear you say you were doing something in Greenland?
Yes, and we bought a property in Greenland to build another school. That's another area where we have a number of families on our waitlist.
So that's being built now?
No, I want this project to come on first because this building is dynamite and it's just a really great conversion and use for the property, to be honest.
I'm gonna go back to the, to the play area. All outdoor activities would be within that fenced play area?
We would likely expand the play area, but not initially, so sort of what is there, we like to organically grow into our spaces and see what our needs might be. The size of that play yard is sufficient for our licensed capacity.
Okay, so the existing fence. Part of what I'm wondering is, you know, obviously it's an injection of, of children and additional noise into the neighborhood. The play area is on, there would be a buffer from the church building if you stayed within that area. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, how that will be contained and could, you know, could change in the future. It, it looks like based on the par, it would still be primarily behind the, the church building itself just because of the layout of the parking area.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions from the board? Okay. Unless you have something more as part of your presentation, then I would like to open it up to the members of the public to speak.
Sounds good.
To the application.
Yes!
I think most of you were here earlier, but again, anyone who's wishing to speak, you're welcome to come up, please speak into the mic and give your name and address before you get started.
My name is Steve Blaisdell. I live at Six School River Road in Exeter. Is it possible to get a Google's map up on the screen? Because we don't have anything about the neighborhood. We have a lot of information about the plot that they're in, which is...
We do.
A bit of an issue.
We do have maps, I mean, I don't know the answer to that. If you, I mean, you are welcome.
I'll tell you what.
I would ask that you do it quickly, but you're welcome to try to bring the map up.
Oh, what I'll do is I'll talk with my hands.
Okay. Perfect.
We, I think so. We've lived at Six School River Road for 35 years, and we were actually here for a planning board meeting when the daycare center was approved for the church. And it was a very, they didn't go to zoning, I can't remember what the issues were, but they went to planning, they got approval for a very small daycare center, and it never, it was more like a home daycare center as opposed to like a big facility here. The church itself has, as long as we've been there, has always been, had a very small congregation. They met on Sunday mornings, they would stay most of the day. They would have another service or whatever was going on on a Wednesday night. And that was all we ever had for traffic. So I would say they were good neighbors, you know, we never really had too many issues. But the main thing was that the traffic was minimal, and you don't get a real sense of it unless you're in the neighborhood. There, you have, excuse me, you have Wallace Road that comes in, it turns into Penn Lane, comes out as Little River, and then you've got Brentwood Road that's there. So at the Wallace-Brentwood Road intersection, there's a bus stop. You can take up, actually, the police department doesn't do us any favors, they quite often put either a cruiser there or one of those speed signs, so you have no visibility. And one of the neighbors has a big RV and people can park on the road, so you have no visibility that way. The neighbors tend to come in quite often on Little River Road because it's a straight shot, and then come out on Wallace because you have better sight view. When you come to Little River, come down and come out onto Brentwood Road, you can't see anything. We never, 36 years we've been there, we don't go out that way because you accelerate to go out. There's no visibility. So we're talking, it's funny, I, I couldn't believe that it would be 80. We're talking about 80 cars a day, oh, excuse me, not 80 cars, 80 kids. That's a trip in, that's 80 on the way in, 80 on the way out in the morning, and the same thing at night. That's one day. I think I did the math and I couldn't believe what I was coming out with. And it comes out to, I did the math three times, 1,600 trips a week. And it's 80. You can do the math. It's four times every student. They gotta go in, they park, they come out, they have to go through the neighborhood. They're there five days. It's an incredible amount of traffic. We have no sidewalks on that street, any of those streets. We have kids that walk to the, to the bus stops. When they plow, you take your, well, that's a bit too much, when they plow, they, they come in from the edges and if somebody parks, legally parks, of course, two cars can't go by each other because it's too narrow, so you, you figure out careful. As for queuing, there probably would be no queuing within the facility. But when you have all those cars either coming down Penn Lane or coming up Little River Road, they have to queue to get into that parking lot. There's no way you can avoid it. And I'll wrap this up. There, the details that are in their application are generic. There's a lot of information about the facility that they want, and it's, it's a nice piece of land, but there are just generalities about what the, what the impact on the neighborhood will be. It has to affect property values. It has to affect safety. You can't have people walking down the street with that many trips in a small area. And the other two daycare centers that are nearby all exit onto Epping Road, and they have like professional exits. It's not like what they say in their application about, gee, there's no problem because we're going to be exiting onto small rural roads or whatever the term they use. So we feel very strongly that it should be rejected. This doesn't fit the need.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Which are the streets with no sidewalks?
All of them.
So Little River Road, Wallace, Penn?
Correct.
Okay.
Just, just speakers only at the podium, please.
There are no sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. I didn't notice when I looked at the...
And there are no sidewalks on Brentwood Road.
I'm sorry?
There are no sidewalks on that section of Brentwood Road.
Oh, on that part, yeah.
Those start on Washington Street. And there's gonna be queuing on Brentwood Road because they have to make the turn onto those roads that I mentioned, and they have to be somewhere. So they're gonna be lined up on Brentwood Road. There is no, there's no capacity anywhere for these cars to pull off into. The only capacity is off into their facility.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Diane Perkins and I live at 3 Wallace Road. I have seen the Little Tree, one that they have in Dover, it doesn't impact a neighborhood, it does come in off 108. All of the talks, all the letters that you've gotten, because we, as a neighborhood, we have all put together a packet, so we all know all the letters, all the information that has gone to you. I point out Karen Week's letter specifically because it's so well-written. It talks to all of these points and it, you know, kind of removes all the emotion from it just that, you know, this is going to be very difficult for our neighborhood. But one of the questions that I want to have is that I know that we have one of the oldest sewer sections in the town. We've already had to replace ours because it doesn't even go in front of our house, so we had to do excess digging, go out, I know a couple of the other neighborhood, neighbors had to have theirs replaced too. We know we're all gonna be, everybody's gonna be on the docket to have them replaced. You're taking a church that was there two days a week, maybe 10 people, we're using the water and the sewer. A lot of the people that are on these roads have pumps to pump their sewerage to where it can, it can go out into the main road. So that is one of my questions. I wasn't sure if they had a well and a, you know, a leach field or if they were using the public sewer system. So that is gonna go from 10 people a couple of times a week to 100 people five days a week, all day long. That's gonna put a huge problem on a very antiquated sewer system. So that's mine.
Thanks.
Because I realize that all the talking points about the traffic and everything is something we're all very concerned with. There's a lot of little children in the neighborhood now, which is great. It used to be all just us old folks, but now a lot of young people have moved in, they've got wonderful families, and I understand the need for childcare. I struggled through that with, you know, when my children were little, so I do understand that part of it. But I just think that you're taking something where, like, where you're actually going to be really disrupting the neighborhood life that we cherish. Thank you.
And what's your name again? I'm sorry?
Diane Perkins.
Okay.
3 Wallace Road.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Taylor. My husband and I live, I was gonna say at the corner of Penn Lane and Little River Road, but there is no corner. It's a curve in the road where Penn Lane and Little River meet. The point I want to make is this is like one horseshoe with the egress going into the property at the back. It's akin to putting a large facility in a cul-de-sac, at the back of a cul-de-sac. It, it's going to create a traffic nightmare and it's going to make the neighborhood dangerous for our children. And as Diane said, we have little children in the neighborhood now. It has been a lot of older families for a long time, and we're, we're thriving, and I would hate to see the complexion of the neighborhood change. I mean, I, my husband and I quite frequently say when we're sitting outside, we can't believe how quiet and peaceful it is, and this will change the complexion of our neighborhood. And I think as everybody else has been saying, the traffic is going to be a problem, and I think the sewer system is going to be a problem as well. Thank you.
What was your address again, please?
Taylor.
Address. Your address?
Eight, eight, I'm sorry?
Your address, please?
Eight Penn Lane.
Eight Penn, thank you.
You don't have to raise your hand, you just need to come up.
It's like school.
Only in school you need to raise your hand.
My name is Richard Wiltamath. I live at 4 Little River Road. I'd like to just amplify a little bit about the traffic problems. Where we are as, we live next door to the Blaisdales, and like his family, we never exit that neighborhood to make a left turn onto Brentwood Road. The reason is there's a hill and a curve there, and you really have to take a leap of faith to make a left turn, and most of our neighbors, I think, are the same way in terms of, they'll go down Penn Lane and go to Wallace Road and then make a left turn. So you're talking about, to me, you're gonna have to use both of those entrance roads, Wallace Road and Little River Road in order to get any kind of decent access to that property. I think you're talking about traffic lights here. It's bad enough that you have the three-road intersection of Epping Road, Epping Road, Brentwood Road, and Columbus Avenue where they did a little reworking on an island. If you try to go down any of those roads to make a turn anytime during rush hour, and we're talking about rush hour here for the, the two shifts of the school, you're gonna have traffic back way up. No traffic light there. There should have been a traffic light there. I think with that volume of traffic, you're really gonna need, not a stop sign, there are stop signs there now, because the, the exit from Little River Road to Brentwood Road is very difficult, and I think people dropping off their children there will find that out very quickly. It's an accident waiting to happen. There have been accidents at the island in the past because of confusion about three- roads intersecting there. I think you're really asking for trouble in terms of safety, and that's in addition to having no sidewalks on Brentwood Road from Washington Street on out, and that would encompass Crestview and Wentworth as well. A lot of kids on those streets, several children on the three short streets that are near the, the church property as well. It's a big problem. I think you're asking for trouble in terms of safety. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Osborne. I live on 3 Penn Lane, so I'm right in the middle of the horseshoe, and I've lived there for probably over 50 years of my life, as a matter of fact, before the church was built in that neighborhood. The church, as Mr. Blaisdell alluded to, they were great neighbors, they were there on Sundays, you didn't hear anything from them, and Wednesday night. The daycare I think you're talking about was only for the church members, so there wasn't any noise. My biggest concern is the traffic, is the accident waiting to happen. We've got a pregnant one, we've got two kids living next door, six and three, we've got another one, we've got eight of them within a five-house, and how are we gonna get out in the morning? How are our kids gonna get to the bus stop? So I'm really concerned, what happens if an ambulance needs to come in? Are they gonna get down our road? We have elderly people in the neighborhood, as I said, we've got young ones coming in, but we've got old ones there. So I'm concerned about the delivery trucks, the fire, the police, all of those people trying to come in because you cannot, me, I back into my driveway every night. How am I gonna back in? Because there's gonna be traffic going up and down. You can't put two cars going up and down that road. Therefore, I request that you... Therefore, I request that you guys give this great thought and reject this. Thank you.
Well, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, am I hearing it correctly that those roads are really not two-car wide?
Yes, you are hearing that.
Essentially a car and a half.
Especially in the winter. In the wintertime, there's no way you're going to get two cars though.
Okay, so.
And you've got the, the mail trucks. I mean, you've got Amazon. We do like our deliveries in the neighborhood. Are they going to be able to get in or not say, we can't get in there? We can't deliver. So it's a real big concern for us with that many. And I think, what did you say, Mr. Blaisdell? 160 cars in the morning and again at night, 320? That doesn't include the workers. So you're going to have 15. So that's another 60 on top of that. So there's a lot of traffic that's going to be going down these roads that I don't even think these roads are made for that kind of traffic. And the sidewalks, it's, it's the concern on, that's my biggest fear is the concern, is the safety concern of children and the elderly trying to walk around. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tiffany Matevsky and I work, I live at 5 Penn Lane. We are, our whole backyard is a church. And one of the biggest things that concerns me is that we have a pool in our yard. And we do have a chain link fence. But if there's kids there up to the age of six and they see a pool that looks inviting, they might happen to go over that fence. I'm not sure. That would cause me and my husband a lot of anxiety. I think the biggest thing also is the noise level. 80 people in our backyard or 80 kids at most creates a lot of noise. We can hear the church people talking right now and there's not many of them. There's 10, maybe 15 tops ever. Yeah, I think those are my biggest concerns. Yeah. Thanks.
Hi, Amy Farnum. I live at 3 Little River Road. I just moved there last year, about a year ago. I purposely was looking for a house that was very quiet, in the neighborhood that was really quiet. So I drove there and I parked there and I sat for hours and hours at different times of the day. And I was, it was confirmed to me that this was the place. This was a really quiet place. So I'm really interested to keep it that way. And I think there's no denying that Exeter needs a daycare. And that's not, you know, in question here. So I know there's a need. There's a lot of wait lists. I work at a daycare part-time. I understand the need for it. And I really do hope that we get one and Little Tree seems to be a great school. But your other schools are on really, you know, busy roads and this is not one of them. And so the question tonight is not whether Exeter needs a daycare, but whether this residential area is the right spot. And so I implore you on the zoning board to think about that and think about everyone here that's describing their concerns. I have the same ones. My kids walk to the bus stop during the hours that the daycare is open and I'm concerned about that. So I hope you put a lot of thought into it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a shy one, so I'll do my best. My name is Karen Weeks. I live at 7 Penn Lane. And you guys have my letter there, I believe. And you've read it, so that's good. So if you have any questions about that, I'd love to answer them. As far as the, as, as far as the change of use is concerned here, I think the problem is, is that I believe that it's a substantial change of use, as we've all talked about. The church was, it was a very minor thing in our neighborhood. It was quiet and, you know, short-lived, Sunday mornings and Wednesday evenings. And Wednesday evenings, I mean, if we saw five cars there, I'd be surprised. I think they did Bible study. And on Sunday mornings, if, if we saw 10 cars there, I'd be surprised. And we, this is the first time I'm seeing these faces. I have a right-of-way on that property that I don't think that they have mentioned at all. And also a concern is for those of us that line, that border the church parking lot, the church had put up a chain link fence in the 60s and it's still there. It is awful. And it doesn't stop anybody from doing anything. We've had, you know, issues with that. And another issue I don't believe anybody's talked about, I don't know if anybody sees this as much as I do, but there is a path that goes through their property down to the apartments. In back of the church, there's apartments. And the people love to go from the apartments and walk their dogs up the path and, you know, through our neighborhood because it's a nice, quiet neighborhood and down the path. And I'd be interested to know if that would be shut down. I assume it would be for.
Could you take the microphone and show us on this site plan where the path is?
Take the microphone.
Just pull that right out.
You know what? I haven't really been on the path.
I'm confused about.
Does anybody know where the path is? Oh, fast. This is it, right? So the path goes like literally directly back.
Amy, can you speak into the mic?
The path goes directly back behind this building to these new apartments, condos, whatever.
Yeah, and it's a pretty wide path. Like, it's a nice path. And yeah, and it goes, I've seen.
We bike that way.
Right. Where's the, the house is here. So yeah, it's, yeah.
It's definitely off this corner.
Yeah.
And this is a lot of wetland right here.
There you go. Sorry, I took the mic.
Ms. Weeks, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here. I know you're uncomfortable, but you're doing fine. You said you have an easement.
Yes.
And you're at the, you're at the corner property.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
And I can see it says use easement for map 62 lot 91, but it doesn't say what it is. Can you give me a sense of what the easement is?
Well, you know, when we bought the property, our real estate agent didn't pass that on until it was closing, so that was a big surprise for us. But it, from when I looked into it, it looks like there was a, an argument with the past owner in the church about who owned that piece of property. And there was agreement made between the church and the property owner that the property owner could garden it and use it as long as they didn't build any substantial, you know.
Property owner being you.
Me right now, yes.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so the fence that they built to is like on the easement line. So we, like, it looks like, if you look in our backyard, it looks like our property because it's fenced into our property.
So your property benefits from an easement on the church property?
Correct.
And the use is not specified, but there's just no buildings or substantial structures allowed?
Right, I believe so.
Okay.
Might have to check the books on that one.
So you're paying taxes up to the property line.
Mm-hmm.
But you can use the land up to the road.
It's not a heck of a lot of land, but yes.
But it's there.
It's there.
It's there. Got it. Okay.
Right.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's weird.
No, it's New Hampshire.
That's true.
I can get into why that exists, but it's irrelevant.
You know, huh, Kevin?
To tonight. Thank you. Did you have more?
I, I just really think that, as I said before, that this is just a, a, a big change in the use of this property. And I don't think it is appropriate for this, this place for the many reasons we all have talked about. Not just the traffic, although that seems to be a, a big issue because, like you say, like, the road is like one and a half cars. And people park on the, on the road. So it's really just one car most of the time, except for when parking overnight is, you know, controlled. But, so yes, I, that's all I want to say is I, I don't think this is the place for this. Sounds like a lovely darecaper. They've got to find someplace else, I think. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to the application? Okay. Seeing, knowing, coming, no one else coming to the podium, I'm going to close the public comment. If the applicant would like to address any of the comments made, you're welcome to.
So I'll speak to some of the concerns and then if Sarah has anything to add, I'll, I'll let her speak after. So with regard to the traffic, again, I'll point out, we do have the schedule that Sarah has put in place that she's used at her other schools and works really well. So we're, we're open to continuing that and making it a condition that that will stay in perpetuity. So essentially, the way that would function is 15-minute increments, 10 families per 15-minute increment. So that's 40 cars per hour, essentially. And when you look at that number as compared to the number of cars that travel Brentwood Road during, during that morning hour, it's like a minuscule amount of cars. So it seems like a lot when you think of it individually, but when you look at it compared to the cars traveling on Brentwood Road during that timeframe, it's like negligible. So, and then the other thing I wanted to note is that the zoning, the R2 zone really focuses on residential. Obviously, it's the single-family residential zone. But it also allows a public high schools, public elementary schools by right without a special exception, without a variance. So it really does have also a focus on education in addition to residential uses. So not that this would ever happen, but a public high school or elementary school could go on this property without needing to come before the zoning board. Additionally, this property could be subdivided into several residential lots with a public road off of Penn Lane and Little River Road.
I actually had a question. Do you have a sense of how many lot? I did, I had that thought and I was wondering how many lots could go in there. I do note that there is a well in.
Yeah, so because we, we really have focused on just converting this building to a, a childcare facility, we haven't even done concepts on that. But just doing the quick math, the acreage on the property is 4.4 acres. The zoning requires 24,000, so that gets us about seven lots if you take out some of, you know, a portion of that for a public right-of-way. So we, we would estimate, estimate it would be about seven lots that we could subdivide this property into with a public road.
You've got a lot of wetland, no? You have a lot of wetland.
Yep. Taking into account the wetlands too. So potentially could go down to six lots as well. So the other thing I wanted to note is that at other schools and at, you know, in talks with the Greenland Planning Board, as we went through the Greenland Planning Board process, there was a lot of talk about, you know, instructing parents to do, to do certain things with traffic. So that's something we'd be willing to discuss with the board here to ease traffic concerns if there's site distance issues that come into play. So telling parents they have to go out a certain way versus the other, the other route onto Brentwood Road. So that, I'll speak to that for this traffic. And then sewer-wise, I don't know what the condition of the main is in this area. Obviously, that would be up to your Department of Public Works. We don't own this property yet, but certainly we would want to investigate our portion of our sewer service prior to purchasing the property. So that's definitely something that we're going to do prior to purchasing the property. We just haven't gotten to that phase yet. Because ensuring that we can get this special exception is kind of our first step.
But it is on, it is on public water and sewer.
It is on public water and sewer. Yep. And then speaking to the width of the road, Little River and Penn Lane, we don't have that whole road surveyed, but I can speak to the portion that's right in front of our property. It is 24 feet wide based on our survey information. And that's just for the portion in front of our property. I won't speak to the whole loop because I don't know.
Is that the pavement or the width of the right-of-way?
The pavement.
Okay.
And then safety concern for children, obviously that is our biggest concern. We're proposing a childcare facility, so we certainly do not want to endanger children. And we want to do everything that we can to ensure the safety of children, both children within our facility and children walking potentially on the road as well. In speaking about the fence that's existing, the chain link fence, we're certainly willing to talk to, with the board about replacing that and also adding additional landscaping buffers along that area to kind of separate the neighborhood from the childcare facility to add some visual buffer as well as maybe mitigate some of the noise. But again, like we, like we talked about, the fenced play yard will be entirely in the back of the property. So that's where the children would be playing, not in front of the building. With regard to the path that goes to the apartment facility, this is the first that we were hearing about the path, so we just briefly spoke about it. But that's something, I don't know if the residents want that open or if they don't want that open, but we, we don't really have an opinion on it. It would be good if we could use that as a point of emergency egress if, if the children ever had to like go that route. But that's something we hadn't even considered. So we would have to talk with that owner of that apartment complex to see if that's even doable.
I, I have a question for you.
How many parking spaces are there?
So on C2, I depicted, so the parking lot is not striped as it stands currently. But I depicted the number of spaces that meet your size requirements. And it's 46 spaces. We actually can fit more, but we only showed 46 because that's more than what we need.
So that goes in the front and around on the side?
Yep. And that's, that's more than sufficient for this use. Did you want to add anything else?
Actually, a quick question.
Oh, yeah.
For either, and it's just as I look through the application, section G talks about site plan review. Am I, it appears that that, I'm reading from the application that you are open to site plan review for this. Is that what's being suggested?
Yeah, so that was, it seemed from the zoning that it's not necessarily always required, but it's sort of at the discretion.
It is discretion, yeah.
So we're, we're open to going to the planning board for site plan review as well to discuss some of these issues in more detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I really genuinely thank everyone for coming because I think it's really, really important that everyone's involved in these types of processes and it's a big deal. And traffic is a huge deal. And I want to be collaborative. I'm happy to work with the local police department and the fire department to come up with mapping ideas and whatever we can do to help with traffic. I will speak to our Madbury location. We're actually the bus turnaround spot for both Oyster River and the Dover School District. So we have a lot of buses coming in and out of our parking lot in addition to our families coming, you know, bringing their children to school. And we're also a stop for Wildcat Bus. So we're like very familiar with the requirements of busing and we're happy to work with the school district, you know, if relocating the bus stop makes sense, like whatever, we are totally, I mean, kids' safety comes first and we're happy to be a partner. And truthfully, there will likely be kids who attend this program who will receive special education services through the school district. So the bus would, you know, you generally, I don't like to use the term, the smaller bus will make its way onto the property to pick up any kids that need to go to the special education program for parts of the day. As far as noise is concerned, I do want to call out, first of all, I love the sound of children. I know sometimes they have temper tantrums and it's really not fun. But we are really working hard to contain our operating hours between 7:00 and 5:30. We do go outside twice a day, so we're not outside, you know, for the entire day. Of course, when the weather is not our friend, we stay indoors. But also, I want to call attention to the fact that the children that we care for, many of them are under the age of three. So the volume that you would expect from a traditional childcare center is different because the bodies are smaller and truthfully, they're, you know, it's just different when you have infants and toddlers versus elementary-age children or even five- or six-year-olds. As far as the pool safety is concerned, I totally agree. All of our fenced areas, we would likely replace the chain link fence just because it's not the prettiest thing anyway. But we do create sort of a double fenced area into the entrance. So a child can't just get out of one gate, they have to get out of two gates in order to make their way out of the property. But the children are always supervised, you know, when they're outdoors. Yeah, and again, happy to swap any fencing.
Was that in reference to the front door, so the entry or just the play area?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do sort of a double vestibule in, in those locations so that there's always that extra layer of protection. If a child can somehow escape, they're not likely to escape through two barriers, but may escape through one barrier. And then lastly, we do actually share a driveway with our neighbors in Dover, so I'm happy to work, you know, with a neighbor specifically because these things happen and we share spaces and we have to learn how to coexist together. And I'm, I'm used to it, I totally get it. And we want to be good, positive neighbors and welcoming to the community. And I hope that we can do that. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close the, you know, public comment and we'll go into deliberation.
Can I ask if we can ask the staff if Public Works has considered anything to do with the roads or the width or any of that? Nothing?
Actually, last night there were. There was some discussion about. Actually, last night, there was, there was some discussion about...
Sorry, Doug.
Good for you to stand up once in a while.
Actually, there was, and this is down the road, but we were talking with, there was a bicycle and pedestrians survey going on around town, we talked about that last night, Brentwood Road was brought up with it, potentially there could be a sidewalk. I don't see anything on Penn Lane or Wallace or anything like that, but it probably will continue down Brentwood Road, maybe to the pond, or at least to, is it west, what's, no, the last one on...
Crestview.
What is it? West Side, not West Side Drive, Crestview. So it would, we did talk about that. As far as the water and sewer infrastructure, I have no idea about that.
No, I'm sure that that can be figured out, whether...
Could it supply, I mean, would it be sized properly? Is that what your question is?
I was more concerned about the roads and the intersection and sidewalks and that kind of stuff.
The roads are, I believe, 24, they meet our regulatory size of 24 feet of pavement.
Okay, so, and, so 111A is a state route, if there is some intersection improvement needed at some point in terms of site distance or anything, that hasn't been reviewed or discussed or anything yet? Okay.
Anything else?
Just trying, I mean, I feel like it's hard for us to make some of these determinations regarding safety, because we're not out there with measuring tapes and we're not experts necessarily, so just looking for some feedback.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. I will note, and that's why I asked the question, is that, you know, our special exception criteria does allow us to require site plan review, which would include some further consideration of some of those issues, more than we're generally able to. Any other questions for staff or any discussion?
In terms of discussion, I just wanted to make the point that I believe that the applicant has somewhat dramatically overstated the number of homes that would be possibly placed on the property, because if you look at the site, at the site plan on C1, you will see that there's significant wetland to the right-hand side, as well as a 75-foot wetland setback in which there can be no construction?
No structure.
No structure in that. And so that essentially takes it down to the size of the existing property and the existing pavement, and so you might get four homes in there. And I just wanted to make that point, because we heard the number nine, and I don't think that would be, that would be possible.
I thought she said seven.
I think she said seven or six, but point taken.
Yeah, there's significant wetland on the property and such, so, that's it for me.
So, are we in, you know, closed public session?
We are, we are in deliberative.
Okay. So, you know, from a real estate highest and best use kind of standpoint, this building and this property itself, not the neighborhood, is uniquely well-suited to this use in terms of its size, its configuration, its, you know, the way it's laid out with the building. My, I mean, it's pretty, you know, they said it, and I agree with that, that it's a really well-set-up building for this use, there is a strong need for this use. My real concern is the traffic issues and the burden it would place on the neighborhood, and I'm not discounting that at all, but if it's not, you know, the property owner has a right to use the property in some manner, it does have a history of a grandfather commercial or public-type use, and so if not this, then what would happen there?
Well, and I mean, and right now, it's permitted as a church, I mean, I have that similar consideration, it is permitted as a church, and I understand that it has been a, it has been low use, but that is not, there is no guarantee of that, certainly church use could increase by right.
Well, I think that the idea of a church would be that they'd want to have more people there, and there would be no prohibition against that.
That's right.
You know, that's the idea of the church.
But increased church use would not extend to five days per week, 7:30 a.m., 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m.?
Yeah, you wouldn't have that volume of cars coming in and out, I guess...
Well, you'd have a greater volume potentially at a more...
On certain days, but not every day.
But church use is, goes beyond Sundays.
Right.
You know, there is often a classroom use, there's, you know...
Youth programs.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I think the concern is the high volume, like of cars...
Yeah.
At particular, consistent at particular times, and it is a quiet residential neighborhood that is going to have traffic going through it. And I did make a left turn from Little River Road onto Brentwood Road, and it was scary. There was a car...
I was behind you, I went around.
Okay, you went the other way.
I went to...
Car came right up over that hill, you can't see it in time, so it is...
Although to some degree, that is, that is out of our purview, I mean, we, there will be a use of this, and there will be traffic ingress and egress.
I mean, just to the degree that it, traffic will be rerouted through the other streets in order to avoid that, I think.
Sure.
Possibly. The larger concern, I think, is children on the street with no sidewalks. But again, it's been a, it's a permitted use, it's been a commercial building, it's a daycare facility.
Do we want to just quickly go through the special exception criteria?
Yeah.
I think we should.
So A, that the use is permitted, special exception is set forth in Article 4.2, it is. B, that the use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected.
Well, wait a minute, I'm that one.
Yep, that's, yeah, you paused me before I could pause myself.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's all right, that's all right, no, that's the one where I get hung up.
Yeah.
I harbor significant concerns that the, I mean, my notes say, we had eight speakers, all of them mentioned traffic, and others mentioned such words as safety and noise. And so I personally do not believe that it meets Criteria B.
I don't know if you want to chime in on that one, I think.
Well, I agree with you, I think it's, if the facility opened up onto a state highway or a larger street, I'd feel better, but when you've got the block there, the top of the horseshoe, and you've got opening up into a neighborhood with roads, with a road that is barely one car, one and a half car wide, you've got 40 cars, or how many cars going in and out to try to pass one another, no.
Wow.
So I have, share the same concerns, I do think the noise could be addressed with a requirement for screening between the backyards of people and the parking lot and any other abutters, but I am concerned, very much concerned, about the traffic. I just don't know that we're the proper experts to make that kind of a determination about the traffic, I feel like maybe it should be passed to the planning board, and maybe reports required to be, you know, or inspections by Public Works or something, because I don't feel...
We're not making a quantitative determination on the traffic, I don't think there's a magic number where we would be happy, where we'd say, oh, it met the threshold, I don't think, I'm not, certainly not prepared to say that. I am prepared to say that it is quite clear that there is a significant delta between the existing and the planned.
Well, I don't know that that's true, but this is where I run into some trouble, is yes, there is between the existing church use, but not the existing permitted use, that's the difference. I mean, the fact that, we've had people state that the church use is limited, but the church has the right to operate, and that's, I think we need to keep that in mind, we can't take the existing use, because that can change at any time.
No, clearly, if the church was, sorry to say this, if it was more successful, it would, yeah, we wouldn't be in this situation. But even that facility, at its maximum usage, I think would generate, I still think there's a significant delta between that and the amount of traffic that's going to be generated by that.
What's difficult without knowing, I mean, I did a little bit of back of the envelope based on the number of parking spaces, but I don't know that, if you base on the number of parking spaces, you could have, it's 3.5 fixed seats per space, so you could arguably have, I think, I think it's like 160 seats in the church. Now, I, that's not a great, it's not great math, because I have no idea whether the church, I don't, I don't know that it'll fit that, but I don't know, and I don't think we have enough information to know what the difference between the maximum use, with the caveat that we do know that the church is not going to be at the same hours, five days a week.
Five days a week.
Certainly.
I mean, I think that the fixed hours and they are during rush hour and school hours and the consistency, it makes it different from a church, obviously church use, obviously it could be much more use than it's having now, but I don't know that it would be...
Well, I think it's improbable.
...five days a week. There could be even more than that on, I guess, Sunday or Wednesday or whenever the conventional services are, but it wouldn't coincide with children going back and forth to school necessarily, people coming home from work every day.
The point is that we, I have a feeling, nobody here is comfortable that we know enough to make a determination on B. We'll leave it at that for now before we move on. So, big question mark on B. See that the proposed use will be compatible with the zoning district and adjoining post-72 development where it is to be located, the post-72 development would be the apartment complex that's to the rear, from which we've had no comments or submission this evening. It is compatible with the zone, with the zone district, and it is a use that is allowed. That adequate landscaping and screening are provided as required herein. Frankly, I think that we've had testimony from the applicant that, from the abutters, that there is not significant landscaping or screening, but we have been promised, and we could certainly make a condition of any approval, that adequate landscaping and screening was added specifically between the parking lot and the homes on the north side of Penn But there's clearly that that single low chain-link fence is not adequate landscaping or screening for the amount of use that will be there. That adequate off-street parking and loading and ingress and egress are designed so as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. Off-street parking, loading, ingress and loading is addressed on the property, ingress and egress is designed as to cause a minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. This is where we also run into a problem, you're having significant traffic leaving the property, significant, significantly more traffic than currently leaves or ingresses, approaches, accesses, I'm not sure what the opposite of leaves is in this case, the property on a regular basis, significantly more than is there, than there is right now. While parking may be sufficient, it is going to really change the nature of the traffic flow on Little River Road, Penn Lane, and Wallace Road, and virtually, not virtually, but every single person who's in that neighborhood has signed a petition of concern specific to the ingress and the egress and the traffic. So I think that I've got a lot of problems with E as well.
Yeah, I do too.
F, that the use can, I'm just going to keep going unless somebody chimes in.
No, please.
F, that the use conforms with applicable regulations governing the district, certainly seems to, may require, G, special exception or approval, may require town plan or review and planning board approval of the site plan, should any motion be made to approve, I think that we would absolutely want to condition a site plan review. With 80 children and 15 staff on site, almost 100 people, I think that the police, fire, safety would definitely need to be consulted before any occupancy permit was issued. So I would absolutely consider that we have a site plan review. H, always a stickler, and I always defer to Laura on this one, that the use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values. Our testimony here has been anecdotal and not professional, it doesn't mean that your presentations were not professional, it means it was not given by professional real estate appraisers, don't attack me. And it is, I suppose if I lived in that neighborhood, I would be concerned about the marketability of my home perhaps being impacted negatively. On the other hand, if I had children who could walk to that school, I might consider that to be an incredible bonus, so I can see both sides to that one. Laura, do you want to weigh in, as you always often do on the...
So, I mean, right now, there's a use that's fallen into some disrepair and, you know, not occupied regularly and maintained, and I think that can be considered a negative. If it's a well-maintained and well-managed property and the screening and those improvements are made, I don't think a daycare is necessarily a negative use for residential properties nearby. However, it all comes back to the traffic. If the traffic is a problem and there's safety concerns, then of course it's going to be a negative. So I feel like we're really, really stuck on the access to the site and the traffic issues, because I think it's, you know, I actually think it's a really nice site for this use otherwise, but I hear and I believe the concerns of the neighborhood, but I feel like it should be looked at from some kind of professional standpoint, to determine whether there are modifications that can be made, or, you know, whether there are safety concerns from, I mean, I know the neighbors don't want change, and that's human nature, people don't want change, but the property has come to the end of its current use and it needs a change, and if it doesn't get a change, it's going to be, you know, potentially a negative for the neighborhood because of vandalism or whatever. So I do think that some kind of change is coming here, and, you know, if it's a concern that this use is overburdening the neighborhood roads, then it shouldn't be permitted. I just don't feel qualified to make that judgment myself here tonight.
Thank you. I and J are not appropriate, so we've reached the end of the criteria. I mean, the option that we have before us is to make a motion, I have a feeling that since it doesn't meet Criteria B and E, such a motion would be to decline it, the other option, of course, would be to ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board. I don't know whether that's something we're comfortable doing, or would you simply have to take action on the applications before?
Well, we have allowed applicants to withdraw, if they so choose, but that's up to the applicant. But I don't know what other plan would come before us, I guess it could include a traffic study. I guess it could include a traffic study. But I, you know, I tried to think of if this came back in a different version, but I don't know what the different version would be.
And as we heard with the previous application, traffic studies are about the most opaque documents ever created and are inconclusive sometimes.
I think that what I was thinking more of was, you know, a review by Public Works and Fire and Safety, you know, Police Department, that kind of accessibility for ambulances, that, that kind of review, more than a traffic study because I agree.
Yeah, let's play that.
Every traffic study I've ever seen says the same thing.
Says the same thing. Let's play that out. They come back and say, yeah, it's fine. It still doesn't meet, it still doesn't meet criteria B and criteria E from my perspective. I think that would be, you know, simply saying, yes, police says it's fine, yes, fire department says it's fine. They might shoot it down, but they might also come back and say, yeah, it's fine. I still don't think that, in my mind, it meets criteria B and E.
I mean, a police and fire study would be more geared, would be more geared towards ability to get in and out in an emergency.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess traffic would play into that if it would happen during those times, but it's not quite the same issue, I don't think.
Yeah, it's very different. They'd be concerned about ingress and egress and can we get a fire truck back in there when we need to.
Can they turn around? Actually, I mean, it might be, you know, there's only one, isn't there only one entrance?
To the property, yes.
One entrance to that parking lot.
Given the size, there's likely sufficient room to turn into that parking lot.
There's a lot smaller.
Oh, you think there is? Okay, so that would be.
There's a lot smaller.
It's a lot big.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, plus the people, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's only one in and one way out.
I don't think that addresses the traffic.
No, I don't think it does either.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, I'd recommend, given the time of the night, that we move forward with a, with a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we deny the application based on the fact that it does not meet criteria B and E of the special exception.
I'll second.
Okay, if we have a motion, we have a second. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, deny.
This would deny, so a, a affirmative vote would be for denial.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
I'm a no.
I'm going to be a no too. Yeah.
So it's three to two, so your, your request was denied. Please, please, we're still in the meeting, so you can, I understand, but you can celebrate outside if you wish. You do have 30 days to, to make a request pre-hearing.
Can we, can we get a re-boost on that?
What the motion is?
In opposition?
It was, Laura and I voted nay. Everyone else voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. We do have one more application.
I'm the next one.
It is late, but we are going to hear it and so I'd actually ask anyone who's leaving, if you could leave so, you know, leave quietly so we can keep moving. It is, it has gotten very late.
Doug, we agree with you. I think after 10 o'clock.
I know, I told Doug because he was here and because this one is the only straightforward one. I normally, I apologize for that because normally I would call the board, but I.
That's okay, I've got a chauffeur home.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll drive it home.
I'd like to just, yeah.
No problem.
I know. I signed up to drive in the middle tomorrow too, way earlier than I'd like to be up. I don't get up that early. And it's embarrassing to show up in my PJs. I mean, every application is on its own, but we're, we are done with this application. We can't discuss it anymore. I don't think there's anywhere open, but you can enjoy.
It's Exeter, everything closes at 5:00.
All right, well, let's get right started. Thank you for your patience tonight and sticking around.
Absolutely.
You?
Thank you, because I was told originally you'd shut down at 10 o'clock and I'm like, oh man, I've gone through the purgatory, I earned this moment. Shall I just begin?
Yes.
Nice to see you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll make it quick. One of my abutters, thankfully none of them protested that I know of, but one of them is recording this on her DVD so she can watch it tomorrow. And so I'm going to give a shout out to Ruth Ann. Hi Ruth Ann, she wants to see my four minutes of fame. So I'm looking, I'm trying to do a special exception to have an accessory dwelling on my property and I'll just do a quick rundown of how it satisfies a different criteria that's here. The property and the use confirms to a one-family lot. All the buildings are already in place, so it would just be an apartment built above the current garage.
So actually I did, so the garage exists.
It exists already.
That wasn't included, it's not shown on the plan, but it is.
That's right, that's right.
But it looks brand new.
It's brand new and I drew it in on my little, my little map. So it's brand new. It's limited to one detached accessory unit. The appearance of the existing building remains unchanged. This is not a manufactured home. The maximum size will be 750 feet as per the, the rules. One unit will remain owner-occupied. It's just a single-family home right now and they'll just have the apartment above the garage. All the parking is, is off the street, so there's six spaces of parking, four generous, four, five, even six could be on the blacktop and then the garage, three cars can actually fit inside that. It's not a condominium, doesn't have separate ownership. There's an existing septic and existing water. Both of those come from the city itself. In fact, the septic was just updated and everything has been tested to make sure.
When you say that, you mean sewer.
I'm sorry, sewer.
It is not a septic system, practice with the pipe.
Yes, thanks for correcting the technical language, exactly.
Okay.
And then, let's see, yes, it's all goes to the town's waterworks and occupancy approval and the entire building it out will all be inspected by the town inspector. The use of it, I, I think it just contributes to creating more housing in the community. Granted, it's only one apartment, but every little bit helps and it doesn't impact any of my neighbors. The road itself, my driveway is right off Water Street, it's on the main road. The property is almost an acre in size and there's plenty of space between me and my neighbors. There won't be additional noise level. In fact, one neighbor already has apartments on, on his property. And, and my other neighbor's already expressed excitement that we're doing something like this, so I thought that was a, a good support. So that's it. And do you have any questions?
I do not. Does anyone else have any questions?
Yes.
I was just wondering, how do you get to your storage?
Oh, in, you mean, how do you get upstairs?
Well, I was looking at your.
To the apartment?
Floor plan here of your apartment.
Yes.
And the left hand says storage.
Oh, it'll, it'll probably just be a, a short door that you would just open up and then it would be like, you know, five feet tall.
It's behind the knee wall.
There we go, behind a knee wall.
Is that excluded from this court footage?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's not living, it's been. It's hard to see how you're going to offend the train people.
I mean, why would the, the, why would the, the train, you know, protest this?
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I wave at the guys, the conductors as they go by because the train literally is in my backyard and I did get an extra horn out of them one, one day.
You're, you're safe because I had to deal with them once and they, they, apart from this year, the seat, you know, the, the chief just starts riding around, he delivers everyone's Christmas bonuses by train. So you're safe until the New Year.
How about that? I love it.
I can assure you that we've vetted this whole project and it is in total compliance.
So the garage looks like it's close to the property line, but you're within the setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. It's unclear on the.
Oh, right, yes.
I'm sure it was clear.
And you're not on town sewer?
No, yes.
Yes, town sewer.
Sewer, but not?
Yes, town water.
And town water as well, yeah, that's right.
He said septic and.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
And I noticed, yeah, there, there's two little axes here, these are.
Those used to be sheds and we demolished them, they were dilapidated.
Okay. And in the.
It's a nice looking building.
Right, yeah, they were in the setback. We discovered, we just bought it a year ago, so we're discovering all sorts of fun things.
Congrats, welcome.
Thank you.
And, all right, any other questions? I'm going to keep us moving.
Keep us moving.
All right. Seeing no one in the audience, I'm going to open it up to the public.
There we go.
No one, I'm going to close it to the public and we are now in deliberative. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Any, any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
No.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Very reasonable to me. I move that we approve the application at 340 Water Street, case 22-22, for an accessory dwelling unit in the existing detached garage.
Seconded.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for having something that's not.
Thank you.
Yeah, so cut wrenching to, to come up with a decision.
It's like a palate cleanser.
It was a good way to end the difficult moments, you say that.
We still have minutes and one of them is from September, so I'd like to get through those.
Okay.
So, all right, so if we could go through the minutes, we have the minutes of September 20th. First, I think we had these last meeting, but we didn't have, we, Laura wasn't present and we didn't have enough people to approve them. So I did review them and had no, no comments.
I have no comments on the, on the 20th, if I can find them.
September 20, I've got here, I had none now either. And we have three, only three of us can vote. Kevin, myself and Martha, but that's sufficient.
That is sufficient. So will someone make a motion to approve?
Did you want to look at them or are you all right?
No, I've read them, I just couldn't find them.
Oh, okay. Motion to approve the minutes of September 20th as presented.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. November 15th, minutes of November 15th. I've also reviewed these, I, I didn't see anything, I had no comments.
I do.
Okay.
Go Martha.
Well, we didn't meet in the NOVAC room.
Oh, good point.
Ooh, you got us.
Good point.
Weren't we over in the town hall?
We were.
Or am I mixed up?
No, you are right on top of things.
I was in San Diego, so I'm staying out of this conversation.
I know, well, there's only three of us again.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Yeah, a good catch. Anything else, Martha? Since you apparently paid attention when you reviewed these?
I didn't see anything.
I'm good.
Yeah, I am as well. So a motion?
I move to approve the November 15th minutes as amended to reflect the town hall location.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Oh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.